I'll introduce good morning and thank you for being here. Have you come up?
How we got here?
Yeah.
Welcome. Good to see a good crowd here for today's workshop. Some important business to attend to today. And do appreciate you being here for this kind of a special workshop just to review and go over really everything about the beaches. We're going to start from ground zero and work our way up to present day. And so again, appreciate everybody being here. We'll go ahead and call to order today's workshop of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It's Monday, June 16th. It is 9:02 a.m. If everybody could please stand for the pledge. At this time, we take a moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right. Thank you. Again, welcome, everybody. We've got a lot to cover today. In summary, this is a beach management presentation and discussion. We're going to talk about the beach management plan and funding options. So as requested, we're going to go through alternative funding options today. We've got some of our consultants here to talk about where we've been, how we got here, and some other experts on the different funding options. So appreciate everybody being here, giving us their time and able to review this important information. Real quickly, we've got a, the agenda will cover an introduction of the beach management plan. This is how we got here, basically. We're going to review the beach management study and the plan, how we, the work that went into the beach management study, the planning that went into it. We're going to then flip to funding sources that are typically used and look at our alternative funding sources. We'll talk about what the need is and what's available out there as far as alternative funding sources. And then we'll bring it back. We'll have public comment for the public to be able to have their say on beach management and the funding options and discussion amongst the commissioners. We have, everybody's here except for Commissioner Pennington, who will be here shortly. She just has some other commitments and will be popping in when she is free and can join us. So with that, we're going to go ahead and start off on the beach management presentation. And our coastal engineer, Ms. Ansley Renkey, will start us off today. So, good morning and thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for being here as well. Ansley Renkey, Coastal Engineering Administrator. Make sure I can get the clicker to work. All right. So again, here's our agenda. I'm just going to talk about how we got here and put everything into perspective. And then our consultants will talk about our beach management study and plan. And then we'll go over some funding sources typically used around Florida. Excuse me. And then what is the need, what's available, and then discussions. And so if we look back in time, prior to Hurricane Matthew, Flagler County was a nice, quiet, stable environment. We didn't have too many hurricanes. It was gradual erosion over time. And then came Hurricane Matthew. And that's when things started to change. And so I'm going to go through a timeline really quick, an animated timeline, just put this in perspective. So we had a gradual erosion over time. We had Hurricane Matthew in October 2026, which did some major impact to the coastline. Then we had Hurricane Irma in September 2017. And then we reacted to that. We were able to get FEMA funding and local funding, TDC funding, and do a project along our northern coastline and restore the dunes with approximately six cubic yards per foot of sand. That was between January 2018 to February 2019. Unfortunately, right after that, we had Hurricane Dorian in 2019. That's when the board commissioned staff to develop a beach management study. We hired Olson and Associates to do that beach management study for us to recommend what we needed to do and what we needed to implement for our long-term beach management plan. Over that time, we had Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. We finally finished the beach management study, did a presentation. Chris Creed came to discuss the steps that he would recommend to implement for our beach management plan moving forward. Then we had another dune restoration, which I would call it intermediate or more like a temporary dune restoration. It was 11.6 miles in 2023. We started in January and ended in December. And it cost approximately $20 million. Again, that was six cubic yards per foot of dune. We, over that time, when we were building the dune, we did adopt the beach management plan in October 2023. And we had our very first large-scale beach nourishment project completed last year by the Army Corps of Engineers. They funded 65% of this project. FDOT funded the other local share, 35% of the project. It was very successful. And I think everyone in the county got to see what an actual beach nourishment project looks like compared to what we had done in the past with the small six cubic yards per foot, which is more of a temporary project. So moving forward, what do we want to do? I think we're at this point now where we've seen the difference between what we've been doing and what is possible with large-scale beach nourishment projects. And the beach management plan does include large-scale beach nourishment projects moving forward in the different reaches that we've identified. And so without any further ado, I'm going to let Chris Creed from FOTH Olson Associates discuss the beach management plan that was developed.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
My, thanks. Thank you for having me. My name is Chris Creed with FOTH Olson in Jacksonville. For those of you who may not have seen me up here before, I'll give a little background about me. I'm coastal engineering consultant. I have I have an undergrad in civil engineering from North Carolina State and a master's in coastal and ocean engineering from the University of Delaware. And I was hired by a guy named Eric Olson in 1992 in Jacksonville. And I have worked with Eric Olson for the last 33 years. And I've worked in doing beach management programs and projects throughout the southeastern United States during my 33-year career, you know. Flagler County is just one of our many clients. Probably 90% of our work is with municipal governments and their beach management programs. And so we have felt privileged to work with Flagler County to help them establish a program right from the ground up. Really, as Ansley said, before Hurricane Matthew, you probably didn't really feel like you had much of a problem. But you're not unique. Hurricane Matthew was a game changer for a lot of communities on the East Coast of the U.S., particularly the Southeast U.S. And so some of these programs were already established. They had background erosion already occurring and had begun executing these programs, having these discussions about how they pay for them a long time ago. So when Matthew hit, they were ready. They were working with the federal government through FEMA and others to help restore their coastlines. Where Flagler, not having, really having a problem before, was not really set up to respond in that manner. So that timeline, Ansley shows, I think represents all the hard work that has occurred up until this point. But the outcome of that is a realization that moving forward, a more permanent and established program is going to be net beneficial for the entire community. So what I would like to do is go back, as Commissioner Dent said, a little history here of what we've done and why we did it. We're skipping some steps just for the purpose of time today, but I'll try to hit some highlights here. So the decision has been made and through many studies that beach and dune restoration and maintenance is a term to be the most feasible approach for beach management in Flagler County. People talk about structures, seawalls, and all these other things. But really, they are not feasible long-term solutions if your goal is to have a beach. And so beach management, through the process of replacing lost sand and providing enough sand for future beach maintenance is the approach that will be taken. How do we do that? So we identified the scope of the problem. And this is part of the beach management, part of the beach management study that we did is what is a sediment deficit? The sediment deficit is how much has been lost and how much needs to be restored to get you back to a baseline condition that you want to maintain. A lot of people use a reference point is, we'd like to be back before pre-Hurricane Matthew. You know, that was a good spot. So in the beach management program, in the beach management study, we used, we had a data point prior to Hurricane Matthew and what the condition of the beach and dunes in Flagler were like. And we use that as a point, hey, that's what we want to restore and maintain. And then you look at the long-term sand demand. Just because you restored a beach doesn't mean the erosional forces are gone. They continue to work on the beach and dune and will continue on an annual basis to remove sand from the system. And periodically, that will need to be replaced to maintain your baseline condition you want your desire to have. So then we look at what is the scope of the initial restoration. And I'm looking at an entire, and we're talking about the entire county now. How much sand does it take to restore that baseline condition? What is that volume of sand? So we've done that calculation. And then we look at the scope and frequency of future maintenance events. Scope meaning how much sand do you place and how often do you place it? And that can vary in time, but for the purposes of study, you pick a number on how often that has to happen. You identify where will the sand come from? What are your reasonable sources? What are, what are sources of sand that you can get a permit to place on your beach? You can only place what they classify as beach-compatible sand. State of Florida has a sand rule. It's very strict. And you can, you have to meet the conditions of that sand rule in the regulatory process before they will allow you to place that sand on your beach. We've gone through that process. We've identified a source offshore and in the upland that meet these qualifications. And then you go to the next step, the fun part, how much does this all cost? And so we develop an opinion of probable cost to construct and maintain the project. And to do that at the planning level, we spend a lot of time with what is the, what does the dredge market look like right now? What does the upland truck market look right now? There are so many projects that have been constructed that are similar in scope that we can lean on where we're having competitive bids come out of the market. We see what the, basically the vibe of the current industry is. What are they really charging communities to do this work? And we use that as guiding numbers to set up in the planning timeline for establishing what is, what will it cost to restore and maintain the project in Flagler? We're using dredges to move sand from offshore to the beach. We're using trucks to move sand from upland sand mines to the beach. We can use combinations of these because it may require combinations of those in Flagler County because of the variations of your conditions, environmental conditions, cultural resource constraints, and development constraints. And those are all considered in the study. And then what we're doing today is also talking about how do we pay for that and who pays for that? And how do you maximize your grant opportunities from other agencies? And what does that cost a local community to leverage that? So here's what we, here's what we've come up with in terms of an implementation program. I'm probably repeating a lot of stuff you're already familiar with, but it's a good starting point with my comments. It's how the county has been divided into the reaches with reach one being really focused on the federal project. That was, that was from a federal planning study that was completed in 2014. That is where the federal coastal tourism risk management project was identified and where it was recently completed in 2024. Reach two is what we're currently working to implement sooner than later. We are on the, right at the finish line to get all the regulatory permits and the Bowon lease agreement to do that. And then we have reaches three and four. Reach three is the one that's under additional study right now. And also reach, um, reach three is, and reach four is where we have an established dune. And we think probably the most feasible thing to do there is just maintain that dune principally because of so much rock on the beach. And so they're really, even though Flagler County is all one thing, we've got three distinct reaches where we have to approach the problem a little bit differently, but it's all of the goal of restoring and maintaining is the goal. So where are we today with what's been completed? As Ansley said, a lot of the work on the south end of the county. And I, please forgive me if there's any misspelled words in this. I was, I've been on vacation and I did this last night. So maybe I was really working with one eye open. But initial restoration in the southern part of the county. And then we know what the funds are available to, to complete. The scope of the project has been identified for reach two. And where the future of funding and moving forward is, with the discussion for the additional needs, is to restore, to restore reach three, get it back to that condition that is permissible as well as, you know, a desired condition. We need to rebuild the beaches after Hurricane Milton up in, up in the north end of the county, back to that pre-storm condition. So we do have a little bit of a deficit there. But a bigger thing is that bottom line here, the funding required for all future maintenance. Once we restore it, how do we maintain all of the reaches moving into the future? And your cost-sharing partners vary between reaches. You have the core helping in reach one. You have the helps, the state, well, the state and the core helping in reach one. You have the state helping in reach two. You have to be determined who your partners are going to be for reach three. And then we have, you know, the state and FEMA up in reach four. So those are cost-sharing arguments, but what we were, what we really need to do is, hey, where do we need the money and what will that be in the future? Very quick summary of offshore sand sources. A lot of work has been done over the last 20 years in Flagler County looking for sand. Attempts have been made to permit some that have been denied. And but we focused on, through our collaboration with the core, this area about 12 miles offshore of the center of the county called Area Three and subdivided there to Area 3A where the most scientific work has been done to identify that as a beach-compatible source. An area within that Area 3A was used for the federal project recently completed. And it is also an area where we tend to use for the upcoming reach two project. There's also a host of upland mines available that have been identified as meeting the compatibility criteria for Flagler County. Obviously, the farther they are away, the more expensive they are. So we look at really most interested in the ones up around Grand and Keystone and that area there, which are closer and have been used repeatedly for some of the past dune restoration. So the approach to this, I'm going to do a quick trip down Engineer and Economics 101, is the equivalent annual cost analysis that we used in the planning study to determine, well, first to compare all the various alternatives that we looked at with different scopes and scales and frequencies and all that. Using the EAC, you can compare those on a level playing field. But then you also look at it for budgeting for long-term funding needs. How much, if, how much revenue do you need to restore and maintain into the future? This analysis can also help you identify what that number is. This was a late-night graphic here, so maybe a little squirrely. So here, just in the cost analysis, and we're looking over 50 years. You really, on year zero, you're putting in that initial restoration. What is that capital investment upfront? And how big and, you know, how much would that cost? And then you look into the future. Here, I'm identifying, and that, the break there is there's a 33 missing just because I couldn't get the whole 50-year in here. But, you know, 11, 22, 33, 44 would be the current reach one re-nourishment interval that we've identified. And the nice thing about this analysis is, is we can say, make an assumption for the other reaches. How often do we want to re-nourish those? We've identified an interval of six right now, and that would be for reach two, three, and four. And you could put this all in the same timeframe where these costs occur into the future. Bring it back to a present worth cost, and then you can annualize it to an equivalent annual cost through time. For the entire investment of the program, initial capital investment plus your maintenance cost over time gives you that an equivalent annual cost. We'll think about that. We'll turn back, we'll get the real numbers later. But this is, this is the approach we use to identify the number. So in preparation and kind of helping establish the beach management plan and how much this might cost, we spent a lot of time with Ansley, talking back and forth about assumptions and assumptions that we needed to apply to the cost analysis to come up with what we thought was a reasonable number to help you guys make a decision on what that number needs to be to get the program started and to maintain it. So again, beach management, long-term maintenance is a selected approach. Reaches one and two, this is what we knew at the time. Reaches one and two will be restored and maintained by sand from that offshore Area 3A. Just like reach one, we have an example. Reach two will be constructed in the same manner. And at the time, that's because we know there are no hard bottom resources there. We were, it was very easy for us to get a permit because we did the surveys and showed there were no resources there. So the agencies had no questions about that. So we were very quick, able to quickly get a permit. And we knew that was going to be the case when we did the planning study. Reach at three and four are a little bit more difficult. At the time, we didn't know what would be permitted there. So we thought it was safe and reasonable to assume that these two reaches would be restored and maintained using upland sand. We don't know if we'll be able to get a permit or not for placement of sand over the rock. And we don't know if dredging would be allowed. Just things we didn't know at the time. So we made what we believed to be a fairly conservative estimate at that time. Yeah. So the other two are the funds for, that reach one have already been spent. You've had that money in hand. You've spent the money. You've completed a project. Funds are available for us to complete reach two. And so when we did the cost analysis moving into the future on what we need, we ignored those funds. We ignored those projects. They're already complete or the money's already there. We're talking about how much money do we need moving forward? Reaches three and four at this point would be dune-only, constructed using upland sand, mechanical placement. Sorry for the redundancy in some of these comments. There's no impact. So we assumed in reach two, in reach three, at the time, that we would be able to place no more than 20 cubic yards per foot or we would have some type of impact. And again, just using our best judgment at the time, based upon our experience with these types of projects where rock is near, we just said, hey, there's going to be a maximum amount you're going to be allowed to place here. Let's just assume it's 20 right now. It looked reasonable to us when we did this. And then here we are, you know, this unit cost. Beach nourishment projects are volumes of sand and how much does it cost per cubic yard to place it? And these are all in cost mobilization and the cost of sand being included in these numbers. $75 per cubic yard for upland sand and $25 for direct placement from offshore sand. We don't, we know that that is about the right number. I think it was around 20 or 21 for the cores project. We've escalated a little bit for our planning study because we don't know how inflation has impacted. Or was the cores project completed in a very favorable bid environment? And did we get a really good price at the time? Some comments have come back from the dredge industry to suggest that was a good price. And we may not be as fortunate in the future to get that again. So we rounded up, going to $25 per cubic yard for the planning of this. 75 is also for upland sand is about what we've been paid. You got lots of examples in Flagler from the dune projects. So for the re-nourishment interval, in our time analysis, again, 11 years for the reach one project because that is the number the core has in their planning study. There's lots of, we can go into a long debate and discussion on why. I don't think that number's right. And I don't think the core thinks it's right either. But that's what their planning study says, and they're constrained by the tools they use to do that. We had the flexibility in reaches two, three, and four to just come up with a number. And so we picked six as a re-nourishment interval for the purposes of the study. Number one, we don't know how the project's going to perform. It's never been built here. So we really don't know what that re-nourishment interval is going to be. But typically, what we have found in my experience with programs like this, that number is somewhere between five and 10 years. There's an example recently in South Ponte Vedra Beach in St. John's County where the core had cut, did a similar type study for Flagler. Came up with a re-nourishment interval of 11 years. They built the project and it lasted a year. And there's lots of reasons why that probably happened. There were some storms and things like that involved. However, it kind of gave us pause to not be too confident in what that re-nourishment interval might be. Given this is a planning, this is a starting point, let's pick an interval that'll give us, give us a good number from, from a budgeting perspective, but also give us, not, and set reasonable expectations. The number might be a higher number in the future. What all these programs have to do is you build them and you monitor them. And monitoring or annual surveys, and you learn along the way. That is not unique to Flagler County. That is every established and successful program in the country has an annual monitoring program. Some people survey their beach once. Some people survey their beach twice. They're looking at it at least annually to understand how it's performing and comparing it to the projections and to the predictions that were made and adjusting as you, as you learn, as you move forward. Not unique at all and is really quite fascinating in many instances. For this purpose too, for the cost-sharing analysis, and we'll get to the cost-sharing a little bit. This is dealing to the WES, but it's critically eroded designation. That's a DEP, Florida Department of Environmental Protection designation that allows them to participate through as a cost-sharing partner in these programs. You can only participate in that program if your beach is designated as critically eroded using their guidelines. And there's a gap between, in reach two right now, between 57 and 65, which is about a little more than a mile where it's not designated. But we feel confident because of the project we've permitted that we're going to get that area incorporated into the critically eroded designation, hopefully within the next month or two. And at that time, when that happens, more than half of your county will be in this program. So the future goal will also try to get more of the county in it as you move into the future. But right now, we assume that this part's not. So, and I'll make a comment at the end about that. Discount rates and escalations, we escalated the cost through time and we use a discount rate to do the whole present worth annualization analysis. These are all guidelines from the course planning documents. And I'll just say that with a court. So what we did is not too different than what the core does. We just did a little more streamlined than what they do in terms of helping you identify what the expectation is for future, the future of project planning. There's some comments on our assumptions with the cost sharing for reach one. Yeah, you got, you've reached one, you've got the core, you've got DEP, and you've got local. We're familiar with that. Some of that money in the past project came from DOT. Whether or not you'll get any of that money, we did not assume you will. But it's something that may, may be an option in the future. Just, we didn't make, we didn't assume it in what we did because you didn't know if we could count on it. Reach two, future maintenance would be DEP and local. That will go to 50/50 if we go, if that critically designation is expanded. That will go to 50/50 if we go, if that critically designation is expanded. Right now, we've assumed that Reach Three is not eligible for any grant assistance from the state or the federal government. Again, these are assumptions. That may change in the future. At the time we did the study, which is a couple of years ago now, we, this is, this is the condition at the time. And Reach Four is a little unique because we believe the only time you're really going to need to do anything up there is after a storm. That dune is pretty stable, it's protected by rock. Unless you get hit by a storm, it's probably going to qualify for FEMA assistance, should FEMA be around, you know, in, in the beach business in, in the next 12, you know, within, moving forward, we just don't know. But the assumptions at the time, 75% of that be covered by FEMA, then the rest by the state and, and local. So it's a pretty, pretty good deal up there, and, but we've assumed this in the timeline is going to happen every six years as we move forward. So in the end, the big summary of what we've done, and this is my last slide, is you look at each of these regions. We looked at the big, the, the project overall when we subdivided into reaches, and the reason we wanted to do that is that, getting back to our comment, that the cost sharing opportunities in each reach are different. And so this is the way it's been subdivided for, for this table, where the overall equivalent annual cost of the program is about $16 million. And with your currently available cost sharing partners, it gets you down to where the local shares are around 12. And you see how that's subdivided in Reach One. And getting back, right now, if you look at these numbers, Reach One, those are the shares for future maintenance because the project's already been built. Reach Two, that's the same, that's future maintenance there as well, because the project has already been built. Reach Three is, would include restoration and future maintenance. Reach Four, restoration and future maintenance. And I just add a last comment here, and this only applies right now for Reach Two because we have, we have a request that's under review. That, that number, for example, at the local level and the state distribution of that would, would vary, or would go down from the local share should the state become a larger cost share partner along that reach. And those are my comments. I got into the, I tried not, tried to stay out of the weeds too much, but kind of give you a high-level overview of what we did to get to our numbers.
Right, so is there some questions for Mr. Creed? Lot of information, so hopefully you got a few questions that you wrote down over while the discussion was going on.
You're looking at me, so I'll talk.
No, no, that's fine. It's all of us.
Right. I, I've spent a lot of time this week prior to this, just so everybody knows, hours with our beach management manager, whatever the title is, our wonderful Ainsley, who spent several hours with me to go over all of these things. There's a lot encompassing in this. It's a huge project.
Can you bring your mic a little closer to you?
Yeah, I can swallow, right? Okay, there, is that better? Hear me better? Okay. Is that good, Carlos? Thank you. I, I, I have to say, thank you for the presentation. It was great. I, I really understand it a lot more than I did for the last six months because of the time we took, and I just want to thank everybody who did that. There is a lot to swallow and a lot of money and a lot of decisions we have to make, and we have to do what's best for everybody, and I think that's what we're going to do at the end of the day, whatever's the most comfortable for the, our, our constituents. So I'm just going to leave it at that. I did have a question, it went in, and then it came out. If it comes back, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any direct questions. I represented Flagler Beach for nine years, so I lived the Army Corps experience, which was a very painful experience. Having the critically eroded designation only came from the Army Corps of Engineer after probably 10 years of studying. So the feasibility study led us to the area just south of the, of the pier. It took us from South Seventh all the way down to South Twenty-seventh. The process was horrible, to say the least. I did check with the Army Corps. I did read, and I'll be talking about it in my final statements later, but I did make sure that the 50-year borrow site was designated for the Flagler Beach project because the county borrow site is so close to the Flagler Beach borrow site. So I confirmed that, which made me very happy. I reviewed the maintenance plan for Flagler Beach, and I'm hoping that our ultimate goal here will be the same thing up and down the whole 18 miles. I, in one of your assumptions on the Reach Three being 100% financed by, or carried by the county, I'm not in agreement with that. I can talk about that later as well. I, my, our ultimate goal here, and as we move forward with Moffett, I don't know which consultant's going to carry which, but our ultimate goal here should be to identify that rock bottom, to mitigate the rock bottom and get a complete program. There's such a huge variation between $75 a cubic yard and $25 a cubic yard. It's incumbent upon us to get the most efficient prog, um, sand project we can. And again, because we were lacking or so far behind, I would suggest to everyone that if you look at the Army Corps study with Flagler Beach, this beach has been eroded way before Matthew, way, way, way before Matthew. We didn't come up with the funding, we didn't come up with a consultant. There were things the county didn't do, but the erosion in Flagler Beach went to minus 13 feet in less, well, it's 100 years old today, so I don't know. Probably 50 years are how long in history we've been monitoring beach erosion. So it's not just one moment in time or one hurricane that took out Flag, the coast of Flagler County. It's many multiple years and many multiple erosion and accretion, erosion and accretion. It's a system. So I'm glad that this presentation will show over time that the process is a continuum process. It's not one day or one year or one study away. It's, it's, it's a process. So that's what I get out of this more than anything is, and I'll, again, I'll speak to it later under the Army Corps comments, this is an annual review, and all we can do is take the best information we have and, and work with it. So thank you very much for coming out and speaking to the newbies. But no specific questions, I just, again, I had a comment. I had a lot of this material that I acquired from Ainsley. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pennington has joined us, so thank you. Questions?
Just some comments. The Army Corps studied Flagler Beach over 10 years ago, and we paid $3 million for that study. And they said, yeah, it's critically eroded, but we can't help. And so contrary to what you're saying, we've been looking at this for over 10 years, and, and we couldn't get them to come. And using their equation, we could, we figured it out ourselves, and we didn't qualify. We even went to Washington and met with the Corps and said, hey, come on, we paid you $3 million. You can't just say, no help here. But they did. They said, no help here, until A1A washed out. And when A1A washed out, then they said, okay, we'll come look at it again. And they did, and that's when we got the project. So, you know, we've been looking at this for over 10 years and trying to solve it for over 10 years. So it pains me to hear Ms. Carney say that we're, we're late, we're not, we haven't done anything. We've been working on this for a long time, and I personally have participated in it for over eight years. So trying to get this done and get it built. And Olson Associates and you, Chris, have been very helpful in getting this done, and we're, we're kind of bringing it to all together now. It's finally all coming together. We've, we, now we have a plan that we all voted on, and it's good to go, and, and, and now we're at the point where we could, all we have to figure out is how to pay for it. And we've looked at several methods to pay for this over the last two years and discarded every one of them. We looked at all these different funding sources and, and threw them away because they said weren't fair to the public, they weren't fair to the county residents. I mean, we can't charge people to use the beach. I mean, that's, that's just a non-starter, you know? We just threw all those kind of things out. We got to the half-cent sales tax, and we said, now, this, this is starting to make sense because it, it's fair, and it doesn't penalize anybody. And it's, 30% of it gets paid for by, by tourists.
Ms. Hanson, we, we have yet to get to that part yet, so.
I'm just saying, I've lived this for over eight years, trying to put this together. And, and to, to have Kim say that we're way late and we haven't done anything just galls me, because we've been working on this for a long time.
I don't think I use the words, we have done nothing.
Well, it sounded like it to me. But we're, we're trying our best.
Don't project, Mr. Hanson.
We've been trying our best to get this done. It's okay, thank you.
And I will say, right, four of us up here are less than five years, two brand new. We can acknowledge mistakes or maybe delays in the past. It does us no good to go back and place blame or talk about what should've, could've, because we're all here in the present trying to solve a problem. So that's where our focus.
My point is simple. Erosion has been happening in Flagler County for more than 50 years. I didn't say in the last eight or three. The point is erosion is happening. Look at the whole state of Florida and the billions of, Flagler County was the last poor little county that sat out there, mixed in with Volusia County for years. We never separated ourselves. So that's the, I don't think there was enough forward planning or thinking about erosion, maybe not so much action. But you're right, we're here where we are, and we're here for a reason, and we need to move forward.
Thank you. Again, Commissioner Pennington, I know you're, okay, good. All right, so chime in anytime you've got any comments. A couple, Mr. Creed. One of the recurring discussions that come, comes up is alternative, alternatives to the renourishment process. And I've, you know, to the constituents that talk about other forms of protection, ultimately it's not our call. We are permitting through state and federal agencies. So just talk a little bit about the philosophy of the renourishment process versus some of the alternatives, which is the path that we are heading down as the preferred method.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, beach restoration and maintenance through sand placement is a very permissible and, and process, right? We've got lots of examples of that in the state of Florida. It's been shown that the re-establishment and the maintenance of our beaches is in the interest of the state as a whole, and it's been identified by the legislature. You know, there are other, people were talking about shore stabilization using hard structures. Beach restoration is considered a soft solution to, because you have, you, you maintain the sand beach, you maintain the environmental habitat that provides, and you main, or maintain recreational space, which are really three key elements to a beach program. And, you know, you have all the economic benefits that are generated by having that process, that, that facility in place. Other options that are talked about are, you know, hardening it, most build seawalls everywhere, we'll just stop the erosion. There's a cost for doing that, and the cost of that is the sand will leave. I mean, there's very, the two do not match. If you don't keep sand in front of the wall, you know, you'll, the, the presence of the hard structure exacerbates wave, the erosional forces. When storms occur, the sand leaves, and you're pretty much left with nothing but a, a hard shoreline. Whether that would be permissible long-term or not, all your turtle nesting habitat leaves, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and FWC may have something to say about that. Other types of structures, groynes, breakwaters, and those types of things are intended to manipulate how sand moves along the coast. On an open coast shoreline like in Flagler County where you don't have any inlets, you don't have any other terminal ends to your littoral system, is considered an open coast littoral. You're just sharing sand with your neighbors to the north and your neighbors to the south. And if you were to interrupt that with, or propose to interrupt that with hard structures like breakwaters or groynes or things like that, your neighbors obviously would have some say about your interference with their right to the sand, but also it could even occur and have, and, you know, impacts unintended impacts, impacts within the county. There are lots of examples from the 50s in Florida where that was the case, before beach management as a whole, comprehensive beach management community-wide existed. In Southeast Florida, when it was every man for themselves, or every person for themselves back in the 50s, on the developments that happened, they started building groynes. It's like, to keep my sand in front of my beach, I'm going to build a groin. They built it at their southern property line. Well, the next guy had to build one, and the next guy had to build one. And so after time, there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these structures in Southeast Florida, and we've spent the last 30 years pulling them out, once these beach programs have been established, of putting sand back on the beach. So beach restoration is going to be your, your ideal approach, and it's may not, longer term, may not be any more cost-effective, I mean, any more expensive, given all the unintended impacts than doing some of, some of these other approaches. Capital, building these walls and structures is a lot more expensive than placing sand. Maintaining those will be a requirement as well. And so beach restoration, particularly for a coastline like Flagler, is the, is the most feasible, reasonable approach. The Corps of Engineers in the study everyone keeps referring to, and I do realize that the beach was eroding prior to Hurricane Matthew, particularly in city Flagler Beach. Corps study identified that as the most erosional area of the county. And you can see what happened when it was just a vertical wall there. Really, the beach, there was very little beach left, and so that's what you could expect.
And regarding the variations in the frequency, I appreciate you having that discussion about the, and then bringing in Ponte Vedra's example. So as far as we've, we've come to the six years using prior examples and, and the Army Corps' data, so just speak a little bit about the six years. And by doing six years, I think there was some discussion about how that affects offshore, the, the amount of nourishments and, and offshore shelf, as I recall, that helps re-nourish the beach on its own and, and protect the dune system by the offshore waves breaking farther away than, than on the dune.
Yeah, I can, I think I put, yeah. Yeah, the renourishment interval, we picked it. We, we picked it out of the air, but not really out of the air. We picked it based upon what we felt like is a, a reasonable number to use for planning study and set expectations of what that might be. We don't know what it'll be yet. We need more data, and once it's, when these projects are built, we can study them, and it might go to seven or eight or nine. The first few may not. We see in, in what we call mature or established beach programs in the state and in Southeast U.S., that number does spread out in the history, as, as the projects mature, more sand is placed. This idea of more sand in the system reduces the wave energy that ultimately reaches the beach, and we find through monitoring that we might not have to place as much sand on a regular frequency in the future, or we can spread those projects out in the future. But when you are starting from scratch, when you have never built a project here, it's hard to say, hey, that's going to be eight or 10 or 11 years. As we mentioned, the Corps doesn't even believe the 11-year number. That just came out of their, you know, policy mandated models that they use, and they, they, they look at the performance of these projects and they realize that's not a real number. And that's based on our, that was the, when that, when that study came out in 2014, I remember the conversation around our office, like, that's the craziest number we've ever seen. And that was 10 years ago, that it was never going to be, there's too much risk, and the timeframe is too long for an 11-year renourishment interval, because so much can happen during that timeframe. So we picked six. You could pick eight. That, but just by changing the number on the renourishment interval, you have to add two more years of sand, because the maintenance volume is the number of years that you believe is going to occur between events times the amount of sand you expect to lose on an annual basis. So if you're losing 100,000 yards a year, and you're renourished it every six years, you want to put 600,000 yards out there. But if you push that out to eight years, you got to put 800,000 yards out there. So you've increased the project scope. You didn't say, the only thing you've done is you say, the only thing you've done is you've saved a little bit of time on your mobilization cost for the dredge, which is a fixed cost. That doesn't change regardless of the size of the project. And so, but you still have to place more sand. So the number, it's not linear when you do it that way. So we believe six for the purposes of providing guidance to policymakers. It was a reasonable number to pick at the time. Obviously, feedback to us could be, hey, we want to see what eight looks like. I did a quick number last night. Ansley asked me to do this. And so I did this last night. I cracked up in the spreadsheet and I was guessing at what that difference would be to increase the number because if I move it to 11 years, I've got to add more dollar because I'm going to place more sand. So I kind of guessed real quick. And it looked like it was about a 10% difference. I mean, there's a little bit, little bit of difference, but it doesn't change the big number. We need a big number. And it might be 10% one way or the other, but it doesn't change what you're really looking for. It doesn't completely change the conversation. And you can adjust that through time, right? As you build it with the plan of going six and maybe you go eight in the future, you can adjust that in the future. It's a dynamic thing. And then the hard thing about beach programs, and we talked about this this morning before the meeting, is that unlike other capital improvements, like a highway or other things like that, they don't move. This thing moves every day. And you really have to pay attention to it in your planning for it. And you're really making educated guesses on what you think the outcome is going to be and use that as your guide to start with. And then educate yourself as you go along the way. So it's important to stay engaged to maintain your facility and pay attention to it.
Okay. I appreciate that extra discussion on that. Thank you.
May I ask him a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if we have a six-year plan and our data survey comes back that we don't need it, do we adjust the plan or do we adjust the funding for the next year?
We can do whatever you want. I mean, you guys are, we're discussing the plan with you, right?
But let's say we want to spend the money and we want a plan, but we don't have, we have to go get another permit to re-nourish, and we don't have the state on board. We're not going to get, we're not going to get a permit if we don't need it, right?
In the state of Florida, you will because they, you can plan, and honestly, the permits that we're getting for you are 15-year permits. They have a maintenance event in them already.
Okay.
Yeah, the state, about 10 years ago, the state got away of permitting every individual project. And they say, hey, we know these are established programs and they have maintenance required. Let's permit a 15-year period for initial restoration. And there might be one or two maintenance events that are covered under that regulatory action. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did ask Jason for a list of Army Corps project life increments, and they range from three years up to 18 years.
Correct.
So I, I'm not saying they have the science behind the science, up to 22 years, actually. But it's what we were given. And I respect the fact that the six was, quote, taken out of the air. But there, we need to pick something. We need something to go with.
Good. Any other questions for Mr. Creed? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, Ansley, what, where do you want to go next? We have the other, the new consultant with us, right?
That's correct, yes. So Casey Connor with Muffin and Nickel will come up and discuss the plans for Reach 3 in more detail.
Thank you. Yeah, we touched on Reach 3, but I'm glad we'll have a little more info on that. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
All right. Casey Connor, Muffin and Nickel, Senior Coastal Engineer, again, based in Jacksonville, not too far from Chris's office. I'm here to talk about the permitting design of Northern Flagler County Beach Nourishment Project, which you guys call Reach 3. So I'm just going to go over a quick agenda here, go over the project review, summarize our project tasks, go over our project schedule, go over our active work and our next steps, and then kind of dovetail a little bit on what Chris was talking about regarding some funding aspects. So this particular project, we are talking about Reach 3. So we're talking between Washington Oaks Garden State Park and Varan Park, approximately six miles from R-159 to R-48. As you guys know, there are a bunch of unmapped natural rock formations that span the northern portion of our project site through approximately R-435. In a quick summary of our project, we're going to capture some data to inform some practical beach and dune alternatives. We will then evaluate those alternatives for permitability and constructability, then coordinate with the agencies to go and secure the appropriate permits to, and lease agreements for us to go and construct the project. And then we will finalize the design for construction and then move into the construction phase. Project tasks here. So our first task, generally just project planning meetings and coordination. Our task two is going to be our field work and data collection. That's primarily going to be capturing the upland and in-water survey data, as well as the environmental data specifically or hard bottom along the whole project site. For our task three, this is going to be our coastal engineering analysis. It's going to be essentially springboarding off of the work done to date by Olson, updating the winds, the tides, the storms, evaluate background erosion dates, rates, sorry, and again, looking for the FDP critical designation to assist with some funding moving forward the project. Our task four is going to be evaluating our borrow sources. I know Chris had mentioned that for the planning study that they were looking at and had assumed upland truck haul source, but we would like to also evaluate the inclusion of the offshore borrow area, essentially expanding that offshore borrow area 3A. Our task five is going to be our alternatives analysis, essentially evaluating the performance, protection, level of impacts, as well as getting ready to evaluate the permit ability associated with the project to select our preferred alternative. Our task six, we do know that there will be some possible hard bottom impacts associated with the project. So we will have a very large public outreach component to making sure we are incorporating all kinds of public feedback to deliver the project that the community wants and needs. There we go. Once we have a selected alternative, we will then move forward into our preliminary engineering phase, essentially capturing the 30% design of the project, essentially how, with the general shape, the feel of the project's going to be, where is that material going to be coming from. We'll then move into our environmental permitting phase with FDP and the Army Corps of Engineers. And then assuming we go with the offshore borrow route aspect, we will have to go through the NEPA planning process as well as secure the appropriate BoM lease agreements. Task 10, in parallel with the permitting phase, will be developing the design of the project approaching our 70% design. And then, once we have all of our permits in hand, we will wrap up the project with a final bid package ready for construction advertisement. Here is our project schedule. Again, we are very early on in the project. We are, I've got that dash line right there, kind of capturing where we are at in our timeline. I do want to go ahead and point out specifically that tasks eight and nine, which is our environmental permitting and our NEPA planning and BoM lease agreement process, do assume an approximate 18-month permitting timeline. That is under the assumption that we have a complete avoidance of nearshore hard bottom activity. I do know that you guys would like us to go ahead and evaluate what those possible impacts could possibly be. So if, as we do encroach on that line a little bit more, as far as if we do have any impacts to hard bottom, that timeline might move to the right, to go in and account for that. Active work and next steps, this is kind of what we're doing in the here and now for our task two. We're doing, going through our data collection phase. We do have our surveyors on site performing our upland and in-water surveys. We do anticipate our first round of data in approximately two weeks. Later this month into early July, we'll be reviewing the data, conferring with FDP to go ahead and discuss our pre-dive meeting specifically for that hard bottom dive surveys. And then early July, we'll be, sorry, late June, early July, we'll be strategizing for that FDP meeting and then holding that meeting in July with FDP to go and confirm our hard bottom diving plan. Go ahead and, once we have full acceptance and approval from FDP, go ahead and start our hard bottom diving in the month of July. Our task three, we are nearly complete with our metocean analysis, evaluating all of the environmental conditions. And we have started our background erosion data review, again, seeking that critical, critically eroded shoreline designation. For our task four, we have started our upland borrow area investigation. That's first part of our two-part process for the borrow area evaluation itself. For our task five, we have started our model setup in our early stages of shoreline evolution modeling associated with our alternative development analysis. The idea is we want to make sure everything was up and running, everything was talking with each other. So that way, once we do go ahead and we get our survey data in, we can jump right into it and be as productive with our work product as possible. For task six, we have started our public involvement plan, started to develop the very loose framework for engaging with your community. And then we kind of come back here to our schedule. Those arrows kind of demonstrate where we are currently at, where we are actively working as far as what the next couple steps will be. Let's see here. So that's a quick summary of the project. I do want to go ahead and just, Ansley did ask me to kind of briefly touch on funding. We are very, very early on in our process with our projects. We don't really know much to say with any kind of real amount of confidence, but I do agree 100% with everything that Chris had mentioned. As you guys know, the beach management plan did have a truck haul assumed, approximately 20 cubic yards per linear foot, $75 per cubic yard. The beach management study that they went ahead and did prepare, they went ahead and evaluated 16 cubic yards and 25 cubic yards of linear foot of various volumes, 16 being the max, kind of likely permissible with 25, assuming that there would be some hard bottom impact. So we're kind of right in that range depending on the appetite for hard bottom impacts that the county would like to go ahead and move forward with. Again, it is too early to estimate costs specific on the dredging component before Reach 3. But just some historical pricing, the Flagler Beach project came in right around $21 a yard. The 2024 Jacksonville Beach project came in right around 25 cubic yards, sorry, $25 cubic yard. And hot off the press, we did have a bid opening just about a month ago in North Carolina, which came in at $39 a yard. Now, I do want to go ahead and preface this. There are a handful of environmental concerns with that project, very shortened construction timeframe. And the more conditions you put and the more restrictions you do have in construction, the price goes up accordingly. So I do want to go ahead and just point that out there. Not exactly apples to apples, but as you guys do know, we do have hard bottom here. And the more we, the impact, yes, construction costs go down, but then you also have the mitigation costs associated with it, as well as the longer permitting timeframe to go through the process. Conversely, the other way, the more hard bottoms you have and the more avoidance you have, the skinnier your template gets, the more expensive your offshore dredging costs go up. So with that, I think that is, that is my summary for today. Again, we are just now starting, so we don't have a lot of juicy information. We do hope to have a lot more in the coming months, but I'm here to answer as many questions as I possibly can.
Great. Well, thank you. Again, appreciate that update. And if there's anybody that has any questions, Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah. Is there any hope in negotiating with DEP about the hard bottom? Two years ago, I spoke with them and asked for relief on that, you know, because the phrase I used was, before Matthew, those rocks were covered. And we can prove that. I mean, we can prove that. And if Matthew uncovered them. So if Matthew uncovered them, why not let us cover them back? And they didn't throw me out, but they, but they looked at me and, oh, well. So is there any hope in getting some relief on that hard bottom with that, just with that argument alone?
So the state requirements are not really bendable, if you will. That being said, our very early conversations with them, they acknowledge that the literal line in the sand for where that hard bottom line is, is quite ephemeral. And they have encouraged our analysis to make sure we capture that ephemeral nature. So that way, we get as much of, I won't call it leeway, but they need to still abide by their own rules and requirements. But at the same time, they do understand that it is a very dynamic environment.
Let me tell you the comment they left me with. They said, Commissioner, we operate on rules, not laws. So rules can change. So that's what they left me with as I walked out the door.
Well, I'll be very upfront with you. Our discussions to date, they have been very accommodating with at least the concept, but those discussions are also without any data. So we don't really know. That's which is why I say the next weeks to months will be very enlightening as far as what we, what we can do, what their level of appetite will be. That being said, I will be honest with you. The FDP staff have been extremely accommodating for our discussions, going so far as to advocate on our behalf, if necessary, with National Marine Fisheries and U.S. Fish for this process, going so far as actually asked to take the lead on beginning those discussions with them early. So I don't want to go ahead and paint too rosy of a picture, but I also do want to go ahead and demonstrate we have started laying as much of a groundwork as early on as we possibly can.
Will you be able to use any of the data that University of Florida provided from the diving? I don't know. Was that any good? Did we get any useful data out of that?
I think, you know, they were testing their equipment and the data was not certified and the consultants.
Right. Well, they were, the guy working on his PhD thesis, right? I mean, that was what it was. But I just wonder if any of that was useful or if you can use any of that. I don't know.
We have taken a look at it. That being said, DEP would like us to go ahead and submit our updated data as we get it. And then depending on the results of that, we might be able to include it as supplementary information, but we'll have to see what it looks like. So.
I think the issue, and it's what I hope to find, is that, is whether or not those rocks actually are serving as some kind of habitat. And since a lot of those rocks cover and uncover through the course of the year, I hope what you're going to find is that they're not habitat for normal stuff.
I'm hoping as well.
Yeah. And then we can just cover them up. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Well, just on that question right there, what happens if there is habitat? How do we proceed if there is habitat under there?
Well, so it's kind of a two-part test, right? So if there is habitat, if yes, then what is the quality of said habitat? And that, the diving results will paint a better picture. That being said, at that point, we have decisions to make. We either avoid with a relatively known-ish permitting timeline, or we move forward into evaluating what those range of impacts with possible compensatory mitigation would look like. And then we will have to evaluate that moving forward. But it could be a relatively long process. Maybe we stick our toe in the sand to kind of see what that looks like. And then we maybe back up a little bit as part of a negotiation efforts. We'll have to kind of play that by you.
Adjust it as, as we have to. Okay, thank you. I'll be around for a little while. So I want to make sure I know where I'm going. Thank you.
Well, I think the scope of the diving is, to me, is huge because you have to diver go rock to rock to rock to rock over five miles.
So the diving is actually part of, it's a two-part process, right?
Right. I mean, it's significant.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Just quick. So how far back have we been able to find history on the hard bottom and the variations in it over time?
So there's emergent hard bottom that you can see through just aerial imagery. That being said, I think that's, that and just walks along the beach have been the most amount of data that we do have, which is not much and certainly not scientific. But to my knowledge, we don't have any hard bottom data at all, other than I think that there's hard bottom out there. Regarding like, from a scientific basis, I haven't seen any scientific surveys to capture it. That being said, DEP is very well aware that it is there. But again, no one that we've been able to talk to has been able to determine just how much.
The best we've got is some, is pictures or photos or aerial photographs.
Correct.
But nothing scientific until recently.
Correct.
And they won't, they'll, they'll look at the old stuff, but it's, since it's not scientifically based, it'll be harder to.
Correct. Correct.
That was their answer, Andy, when I went up there. We had pictures, but that's all.
Right. And so what does mitigation look like?
Mitigation has kind of taken on a four-letter word kind of connotation to it. It really does. It really does depend. There are rules and requirements that the agencies do look at. That being said, they can really drag their feet through the process and make it as cumbersome or as laborious as they kind of would like it to be. It could be everything from designing a mitigation site to go ahead and place rocks or other kinds of structure to kind of take the place of that possible covered hard bottom that you'd be having. And, you know, their quantities that they would have to, sorry, the quantity of like aerial coverage as far as how much we'd need to go and replace would be through the UMA process. And then there will be not only the capital cost associated with constructing it, but also then the long-term monitoring, again, to go and confirm it is working as anticipated.
So kind of like a, if you're allowed to cover it, then a nearshore reef or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So there would need to be like a nearshore reef siting study. We'd need to go and figure out preferred locations for it, go through the design process. And then the monitoring, I think, is going to be really critical here because if it settles into the raw or into the sand or anything along those lines, or it does get covered, then your aerial extents that you originally mitigated are dwindling. So once you get to year five, you might need to do a corrective action.
And is there a similar hard bottom outcropping along the East Coast anywhere else?
Down south, absolutely. There are in River County, as you get in St. Lucie County, even further south than that, yes, there are hard bottom communities. That being said, I'm not aware of anything that's been purposely impacted. And I say purposely impacted, not accidentally impacted in quite some time. So the regulators at the agencies are kind of waiting with bated breath, trying to figure it out because I'm not sure that they know themselves yet.
So this is a bit, doing this right now is a bit of a unicorn at where.
It is. Yes, which is why, you know, once we get the data in, it's going to be very enlightening, not only for us to go and review it, but also that first discussion with them, what's their first reaction going to be like?
Okay. And we talked about the rules, what their rules are versus laws, but what is it the rules? What is the rules that they're going by that are determining whether it's?
The Florida statutes?
Well, I guess on whether it's a habitat, is that what the rules are that they're following?
So that will come through the end results of that kind of evaluation called a UMA, where it's essentially what is the quality of the habitat? What is the quantity of the habitat? And then coming up with an associated mitigation.
So that's no different than wetland mitigation?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Similar process, yeah.
Yes, okay, understand that. All right, I got, that's all mine.
Do we get credit for establishing habitat for wildlife and, you know, turtles? Because we do that. I mean, it's a huge increase in habitat for wildlife.
So I have, I've heard on many occasions where you try to call it horse trade, two acres of sea turtle habitat for one acre of hard bottom, and I have yet to find one regulator to buy off on that. They've gone the other direction and say that they can't put a value on any one being better than the other, so.
Well, thank you very much. So what's next on the agenda?
All right, so now we're going to move into alternative ways to fund these type of beach nourishment programs. If we can go back to the presenting, yeah, funding, right. Okay, so as we've talked about, Chris Creed and also Casey talked about different funding sources, we are familiar with the Army Corps of Engineers, cost sharing on these type of projects.
If I could, can we hold off for just a minute and make sure that we, if it's okay, maybe we take just a couple-minute break? So anybody else that's up here that needs to use the restroom facility?
Probably be a good time.
A key component has left us and I want to make sure that. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Ansley, please, start from the beginning.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to get into funding sources that are typically used to fund these beach management programs across the country. As we know, the Army Corps of Engineers will be a large cost-sharing partner in areas that they deem critically eroded in their feasibility studies. Once they build the initial project, which we're all familiar with, that just happened last year here in Flagler County, when they go into re-nourishment, they will typically cost share 50% of the re-nourishment projects. Then we have FDIP, which is the main state regulatory agency that has the Beach Management Funding Assistance Program that Chris Creed was talking about, like once you're in the game, right? So they help cost share 50% as well in critically eroded areas, but it has to be designated by the state as a critically eroded area. Then you go through what's called a local government funding request grant program every year where they rank the projects. We submitted this last year for the very first time for funding of reach two, which is coming up, and we were successful at getting ranked high enough that they anticipate funding. But the problem is here is that they will only match what you put from local government funds. So it has to be Flagler County local government funds and they'll match it. All right, other local government revenues can be used, tourist development tax.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question before you?
Sure, go right ahead.
Great, thanks. Could you go back to the Army Corps, please?
Absolutely.
So the discussion here is around coming in and re-nourishing when they deem it's time to re-nourish. Could you speak to what happens when there's a named storm and the main reason why Flagler County pursued a Army Corps project as in building it back?
Correct, yes, sure. So when we have a name, declared named storm, natural disaster, the Army Corps of Engineers through the Stafford Act will use FCCE funds where they will come in and repair the project at 100% cost to the government. Yep, very important tidbit of information, yes. So if we get direct impacts, they act similar to FEMA, they come in and they'll pay 100% to restore it.
Can I ask a part of that?
Sure.
So what determines 100%, I mean, what determines how they?
If they are going to do that.
Quotas impact, yeah.
Right, okay. So they are monitoring these projects, just as we talked about earlier, once you build it, you have to monitor the project. They'll look at their pre-storm surveys and they'll actually look at the dune across the beach and offshore on the nearshore shelf as one profile, and they'll do a profile every 500 feet of the project. They'll quantify the sand in the project area and they'll determine if you lost sand or not based on the post-storm surveys. So they just did this after Milton. A lot of people noticed a very big change in the beach profile from our Army Corps project after Hurricane Milton, and they said, oh my God, all the sand's gone. It wasn't gone, it just moved offshore, a little bit offshore where you can't see it, it's under the water, but it's still in the profile. So they deemed we did not need another nourishment because they actually said we gained sand from that storm, believe it or not. Yeah. You're welcome.
Is the, also the push to get more critically eroded designated?
Army Corps of Engineers, yes. So we have, you know, talked to our federal, what is it lobbyist, yes, and he is pushing very hard for us, and we've had political buy-in from our representatives in Washington for our new upcoming feasibility study. So it looks like things are positive for that actually coming on board.
And how long is that study?
It's typically four years. It's called a three-by-three study, but we've heard from the Army Corps, it's typically going to be four years.
And that's for which reach?
This, we want the entire county to be in the study. So we have asked for everything that wasn't deemed critically eroded prior to be studied again.
Okay. All 18 miles?
Yes, that's what we've asked for.
That would be awesome.
Yes, it would be.
Right.
I mean, we'll see what the feasibility study shows, right?
Right, right, okay.
Okay, right. So do you want me to move on now to? You're welcome. Okay, so let's move to local government funding sources. TDT taxes are typically used to fund these type of projects. As you guys know, we have, I think, another half penny just passed, so we have one and a half pennies that might be funding our beach management program in Flagler County. The local option sales tax, there's been a lot of discussion of that, I'm sure we'll get into that more today. General fund appropriations can be used, but this is less common. We've had a lot of grant funding recently, so we haven't really had to use too much of our general funds. We've had, actually, I added it up, since I've been here, we've had about $100 million in grants between federal and state agencies. And then we've, although if we don't build something significant that restores our coastline, that's our job, right? And if we don't do that, the funding sources will be diminished after that. And then another possible alternative is the municipal services benefit units, MSBUs, or the municipal services taxing districts or MSTUs. Those are also used commonly in other counties. And so our Commissioner Carney shared the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association white paper to all of you to read. I thought it was a very good white paper. It listed out a lot of alternatives that can be used to fund these beach management programs across the country. We also had our consultant group, Stan Gerberer came in and gave a presentation last year from CFM Group. All of them recommended these funding alternatives to Flagler County. Stan Gerberer recommended setting up the MSBU. He gave an extensive presentation on that. He has done that for other counties in Florida. We have a final report that shows his recommendations for the MSBU. He also recommended using use taxes, TDC, and property tax and bonds. So those were all in that final report. And it is, you know, our job to move forward and determine what alternatives are best for our community. In the ASBPA white paper, if you read that, it talks about looking at your community characteristics to determine the right alternatives for your community. So I actually reached out to Florida Shore and Beach Preservation Association, and the executive director helped me reach out to other counties that I felt had similar community characteristics to our county here in Flagler Beach. And of those, about half dozen counties that we reached out to, all of them had a combination of TDT tax or TDT and MSBUs or MSTUs to fund their beach nourishment, beach nourishment programs. So I just wanted to offer that information to you guys. And I'm going to turn it over to Heidi and she'll get into more of the funding information unless you have questions for me.
Yep. So basically summarizing what's been presented so far, in order to implement the beach construction project, it does involve significant financial investment. Typically, what you'd see is millions of dollars. While there is federal and state funding that can cover substantial portions of those costs, these contributions typically do require a local match, as you've heard from the previous speakers. Providing that local funding is essential to leverage external dollars, ensuring that our project will get completed. Without having that adequate local investment, we risk losing some of those critical federal and state resources that will be needed for shoreline restoration and for resiliency. So when we look at the initial construction, it's estimated at about 120 million. Ansley had mentioned close to about 100 million in grants. Not all of those were related to necessarily the construction. We've got various other grants that were post-storm that she had worked on, but what we're looking at with this project is about 90, almost 93 million. Of the 120 million is coming from grants and other agencies. So what you're seeing is about 77% of that cost is coming from those federal and state resources. We have pledged some local sources of funding. We have pledged some local sources of funding through tourist development. Currently, we have a small portion of general revenue and half-cent sales tax that we put into that, that's that $5 million makeup that we have for fiscal year '25. But even with all of that funding, we still have a shortfall of 17.5 million that's going to be needed over the next two to three years in order to remain on track for that construction period. And then when we look at the completion of the construction, you're going to have some ongoing maintenance and future nourishment for the coastline to be essential to preserve and protect the environment and the economic value that it brings. There are a lot of future variables such as storm events, sea level rise, shifting state or federal priorities. We don't know what's going to happen with FEMA at the federal level, but we do need to make long-term, you know, it does make, bring a challenge because I think it makes that long-term planning a little bit more complex. But we do remain committed to seeking additional grants, leveraging tourist-generated revenues. We anticipate that we will be using that MSBU or MSTU as part of our funding makeup. However, to ensure that long-term sustainability of beach preservation, it is critical to identify some additional recurring local revenue sources that will provide stable, predictable funding stream for future nourishment. When we look at this, and based on that, every six-year period, it's about $72 million. If you break it down, it's an equivalent annual cost of 12 million. What we were looking at leveraging is about $2 million annually to be paid by a combination of TDC and that MSBU, MSTU. It still leaves a local funding shortfall of $10 million annually. And that would be needed to be collected over that six-year period to ensure that we have the funding necessary when we need it. So, here's just kind of a summary of what's needed. Looking at the beach management holistically over that six-year period, we've got three years of construction funding, and then six years of maintenance and nourishment, and that's, again, just to ensure that you have the money available at the interval when you need it. So the first three years show a need for 15, roughly 15.8 million. The last three show a funding need of about 10 million. So what's available? As Ansley stated earlier, there are many ways to fund a beach management program. It varies across the state of Florida. Some areas do receive a lot more tourist development tax than we do. So when we're looking at this, and we need to look at those recurring revenues, this is what's available today in Flagler County. So you have your ad valorem property tax. As you know, that is used to fund the day-to-day operational budgets, not just of the board, but also your constitutionals. We had a meeting last week to talk about where we were at with the constitutionals and the budget. We currently have a $2.9 million gap right now. If this was to be absorbed by all of the annual budgets, that would be about a 10% reduction. And then if it was absorbed by the county annual budget only, that would be a reduction of 20% of our ad valorem budgets. We do use tourist development funds right now, as it's been proposed in some of the models we've been working on. It varies anywhere from it's a penny, maybe it's easier to look at it in percentage. We have 20% that's already dedicated, that's the one penny. And we show applying whether it's an additional half or another full penny, and that's how you get to that two pennies, or 30% or 40% of the revenues. The maximum amount allowed by law is three cents, it would be 60% of the tourist development funds. And if the maximum was used, it would only contribute another $880,000 a year. So that's the maximum that you would be able to apply to that fund. It would come with some severe consequences to your tourist development program. Right now, I believe they're using, 60% is allocated for their operations, their marketing, things like that, and then you've got another 20% that is being made available to the community in the way of grants. So it would definitely come with a consequence. And then, the other thing that we currently have is the local option sales tax. That tax is currently used to support beach management, but it also supports your roadways and your stormwater. And if it was pledged to the beach only, you would not have any local funding available for roads and stormwater. So I just want you to be mindful of that as we start working through some of these scenarios. So when we look at the ad valorem property tax, this is what a 10% reduction would look like. If we were to apply it to all the budgets, it would be roughly 8.7 million coming out of the board, 5.4 coming out of the sheriff. You can kind of see what those numbers look like as they go down. If we were to take a 20% reduction on the board only, that's roughly $15.8 million. When I had done the one-on-ones with you, maybe about a month ago, I just wanted to point out, in looking at our budget, when I showed you our budget in comparison, personnel costs are around 65% of the board's budget, and that's salaries and benefits that go along with the personnel. If we were to look at the math, our general fund budget for personnel costs is about $39.5 million. So if we were to take a 20% reduction here, that would be about a 40% reduction in personnel costs. That's what we would be looking at, if we were to absorb it 20% on the board. So what are some of the potential consequences? I mentioned the local option sales tax. Currently, we receive about $4.7 million annually. If it was, right now, it is used to support your roadway system. If it was used solely for the beach, you will be abandoning Flagler County's current strategic plan, you'll fail to establish a pavement management plan, there will be no local match for FDOT roadway grants, you will potentially lose scrap and SCOOP grants, you'll also lose out on any grants from the River to Sea TPO, and you will not have any funding for stormwater. So, as we move forward on the next slide, I have some language here, just excerpts from statute, that talk about some of the FDOT roadway system grants. Over the past two years, staff has been demonstrating to the board the need for establishing a pavement management plan. At your last meeting, I believe you had approved the next five-year work plan with engineering. We are looking at bringing that back to you to show you what you could do over the next five to 10 years. If we had a pavement management plan, it would definitely strengthen the county's ability to comply with some of those statutory expectations, demonstrating project justification and securing long-term state investment. Based on Florida statute 339.2816, that's your scrap, and then 339.2818, that pertains to SCOOP grants. Failure to provide required local match or demonstrate project readiness could result in disqualification or reduced competitiveness for funding opportunities. Some potential consequences would be a loss of grant award if we could not meet the local match requirement, or follow through with project implementation. FDOT may rescind some of the awarded funds and reallocate them to other eligible counties. Reduced priority for future funding without having a pavement management plan or a demonstrated commitment to road maintenance and funding readiness. We will receive lower priority in competitive evaluations. It will result in delayed infrastructure improvements because without being able to leverage scrap and SCOOP funding, essential roadway projects may be delayed or remain unfunded, which will impact safety, connectivity, and economic development. And it will increase the local burden because without having state support, the full financial responsibility of maintaining and upgrading our roads will fall on us as local government, placing pressure on general funds, or it will require the introduction of a new revenue So, potential options to sustainably fund long-term beach management, you need to have recurring revenues. Several potential options are under consideration. These include reducing operational budgets currently funded by your ad valorem, reallocate those savings and supplement it with some additional tourism or local option sales tax. You could increase the millage rate, it would be a little over one mil that would be required. You could adjust the rate that we were proposing to use on the MSBU or MSTU. Right now, as it is, it's proposed at $160 per unit. For every $10 that you increase it, it would generate another $104,000. Or you could introduce a new dedicated revenue source that would provide for recurring revenue. Each one of these options does require careful evaluation to balance community priorities, fiscal responsibility, and the need to protect our coastline. And that's pretty much it. So I just open it up now for discussion.
Questions on the presentation, and from anybody, really, who has spoken today? Commissioner Pennington.
Ms. Petito, there was a slide in there that talked, had a statement, and we received a letter regarding bonds. The bonding of things, TDT existing tax, and I think it's the PFM letter that says it didn't recommend the issuance of bonds because of the shorter timeframe for repayment. Did we, what was the timeframe given to them, and based on the six-year?
Correct. We shared with them the study that we had, and the amount that was needed, and the interval that it was needed. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get Mr. Glover here. This week, there's actually a conference in South Florida for the Florida Professional Finance Officers Association, so a lot of our finance people are down there attending the conference. But we did share with him the beach management plan, kind of outlining interval and amount needed. They don't recommend it because they see it as an operational cost. Typically, what you would bond is for, you know, completing the construction, like a one-time cost, not things that are recurring. When you look at the renourishment and looking at how it's viewed as an operational cost, they caution you because it may be taxable. And so not only would you be paying tax on that funding, you also have some issuance and carrying costs. When we look at this, I believe his letter talked about a pay-as-you-go system, and that's typically what you do when you are building up to a fund. The challenge that you have with bond issuance, you have to spend that money within three years. So that was another consideration when we were looking at it, is you're looking at either a six-year interval, or maybe at some point, if we can get to an eight, or 10, or 11-year interval, over time as the shore starts to be built up. So, they don't recommend doing the issuance of bonds. It would end up paying, you'd be paying out more in the long run, rather than just saving it up.
But the, just go with me on this, the initial construction could fall into a bond that wouldn't be considered, you know, an operational? Yes, no, maybe?
For the initial construction, those three years that were short, I think it was 17, roughly 17 and a half million, certainly you could bond it, but you're going to have a repayment, and you're just going to have to identify what source of funding you're going to use to repay it.
So, and I read the state statutes, it did address in the TDT Tourism Fund that it did look like you could bond the TDT for beach and Just, and I know we don't have anybody to weigh in on that, or Al, do you know off the top of your head of TDT? I know bonds for, for building sports complexes and things like that off the TDT, but it looked like it also, anything in paragraph A through J, and that looked like beach was included in that.
It can be bonded, but you still have to go through all the due diligence that would be the predicate for the bonding.
Commissioner Richardson.
After doing a little bit of research, I'm not going to say I'm an expert on any of this, but the TDC is one of the larger contributors that we can take from, as far as on the budget, right, towards, towards the beach, because that's our driver. First of all, I believe we can take up to three cents of the tourist development. It might be a little bit tedious and hard work, but that would double what we're getting from the TDC. In addition, the advertising, I don't know, I don't have a count, maybe Amy can supply me with a count, of how many people we service as tourists on the TDC, and how much are we spending to get them? You know, whether it's cost-effective for our advertising, and how many people are coming here due to our marketing? And I'm going to use the word "marketing" rather than "advertising," because what we're marketing is a business transaction for them to come and spend their funds here. And I don't think we look at it that way in government, but in business, we do, because is it cost-effective or not? And I guess that would take a little time. Amy, do you have something? No? Yes? Could you come up and give us some numbers? Because if we're spending $30 on a $2 income, I'm really want to reverse that. I am sorry, I'm crazy, but that's just the way my brain goes. And I'm looking for harder numbers, because there's no numbers in my head. Maybe? Kinda?
So, as you can see, this is literally scribble-scrabble, but this is our whole entire budget for fiscal year '26. We're projecting $4.4 million, and this is the percentage allocation of where all that $4.4 million goes. So you can see the top two contributors are the Beach Restoration Fund, and then the Capital Projects. Our next largest is 18% of our entire budget, which is $800,000, goes to the marketing and promotion. So you could say, we invest $800,000, we get $4.4 million. As far as how many visitors, this past year was about 900 and, I'll say, 50,000. And then our personnel is 15%, that's our other biggest contributor. So, and we have five people on staff, we've had five people for 10 years. So I think those were the initial questions.
So you said, how many thousands of people?
About 950,000? I think it was 940-something, but...
So, I can't do the, let me say 10,000 from eight, so that's $88 per person.
I'll trust your math.
Is that good math?
I don't know.
Any, is there a mathematician in the house? Anybody? No? I guess I could do it on the computer. Let's just assume, I'm just taking 10,000 and dividing 880,000, and that's about $88 a person that we're, we're spending to get a return. It seems like it's a high, high figure to me. I don't know, I'm going to have to think about it, because these are fresh numbers to me, and if we're spending 20% on the nourishment, that's great, but how much are they really contributing? And that's where my mind goes. I thank you for those. I thank you for those numbers. I'm going to try to write them down or I'll get them from you later, okay?
Yes, I'll provide them. Well, I can say the economic impact is about $800 million total. I don't know if you guys are aware, but this past weekend, Palm Coast hosted the largest lacrosse tournament. We had 150 teams. That's 1,500 players that were here. So that's about, I think Palm Coast did a analysis, its economic impact of about 1.8 million.
So just real quick, just so we're comparing apples to apples, that lacrosse tournament, did they not, you didn't reach them through advert, and that's a question, it's not rhetorical.
It's a question, yeah.
Did you reach them through promo, advertising, or did you reach them through that grant program that you have where you give events grants? How did, I mean, you physically handpick who you're going to work with, correct?
So this, yes, sometimes is the answer. This particular tournament, we've been hosting for years, but it keeps growing and growing. And my point in that is to show you that, that capital project, when we invest and shows the importance of the sport fields, that helps fund the beach. Because of course, all those people, they stayed mainly in those highway hotels in Palm Coast. So it's just to show you the balance and why the funds are where they are.
I think, right, also, it's not putting all of your apples in the beach basket. We've, the TDC has been trying to bring and share the tourists to other areas. So we've got the trails and eco-tourism plus the sports fields, which are the beneficiary of those individual grants. And also, the part of the other fund that goes to the competitive grant process, which Palm Coast has successfully used to be able to increase their ball fields plus the pickleballs, other, it goes to other areas that help bring tourism as well.
Yes, the diversification, the investment, just like Ms. Petito was saying about abandoning, if you only use your current sales tax for the beach, you're abandoning other projects, it's the same thing. So it's up to the board. But I just wanted to share this data with you as well. This is the cell phone data provider that we contract with. And this is a two-year summary of cell phone data of the entire 18 miles. 62% are locals and 38% are visitors. Where the majority of the visitors are, no surprise, is up at the Hammock Beach Resort area. The rest of the beach access parks are all predominantly locals.
And I understand the spread on the 1111 and 1109. I know there's a recommendation from the Tourism Board that the beach funding receive all of the 1111 and half of the 1109.
Initially, yeah. And I think the way that they left it, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Nance, was because there were still unanswered questions, it was kind of a comeback. We agree, we recommend this half of 109 Capital Projects for now, but I think it was once things get more flushed out and you know more answers with more certainty, then come back.
So another fluid number.
Right.
Everything's so fluid.
Well, it's that evaluating.
I wish it was black and white.
Yes.
And if I, personally, if I was leaning towards touching anything on the tourism side, it would be that Fund 1109 temporarily, a little bit more temporarily than the Board, I believe, the Tourism Board. I was at that meeting. They all made good points, but I think when we're in situations that we're in, I think we could be justified in doing both of those funds for a short period of time. I'm leaning more towards that than moving, than messing with Amy's plan on the overall tourism.
Can you please, for the benefit of the folks that are here and are watching, deter, you know, let us know what those different numbers relate to?
It's 880 and 880, so it's...
No, no, not the financial numbers, what they represent. You're using the numbers like letters.
You referenced the fund numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The numbers, nothing to people that don't have their papers in front of them.
I'm almost in the same category as all your, all your letters coming together.
Well, it's alphabet soup.
So 1111 is beach renourishment. And it was used, it's over and over and over again, but it's used to fund some of the emergency funds, projects that we have. It was also used to get all of the easements all along.
Yeah, that's still ongoing, recording of the easements, yes.
So as long as it's related to beach or beach renourishment. The other fund is the Capital Fund, which has a grant attached to it. And individual municipalities and the county can put in an application to receive those funds. We don't necessarily, last I looked, we don't necessarily deplete that fund. It's nice to have a little cushion or some funds. If you've already, if you've already obligated, which we did, $730,000 something thousand to Flagler Beach, I don't think we can recall that grant at this point, but we would have to stop doing grants on a short-term basis, use that money for the beach and have all the money go to the county. And then after reevaluation, we could go back and start up that program again.
Yeah, and I think it's, from the TDC perspective, the beach, funding for the beach program helps maintain and preserve our existing revenue, right? We don't want to lose that economic engine that we have. But we also, I think, recognize it's not going to bring any significant new impact or revenue. It helps maintain it. And the Capital Projects is that catalyst for generating that new revenue. So we look at it like, what decisions do we need to make? Because to me, the goal is how can you generate more money in the Tourism Development Tax, no matter what fund? What do you need? What are the tools you need? So when they, when the TDC did that split, that was their thinking, you know, more or less, was investment, generate new money, more money. Because at the end of the day, we, our department, the county, we don't own any hotel rooms. We have no say how much they charge a night, the vacation rentals, we have no say. So the marketing and promotion is what we rely on to generate that new, that new revenue.
On that line, do we have any kind of resort taxes or those extra fees that's all over Orlando and all, and all the tourist developments areas?
The resort does charge a resort tax, but that is theirs for the rent and for services.
Okay. Heidi, is there any possibility, or let me just ask Al or Sean, can we charge an additional tax, so more of those funds that we get in tourist tax for another penny? Is that illegal, legal, not available, unavailable? And will it affect?
We've maxed out the, at five pennies.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We've maxed out what's available to us in the Tourism Development Tax with five cents on the dollar.
But we only have one and a half cent towards the beach, right?
Right. We can reallocate more toward the beach, but we can't...
So we could do more?
Yes.
Up to three, from what I understand?
Up to three, yes.
So we could double what we're getting at this point?
Right.
If we pursue that?
We're allocating.
I'm sorry, I meant allocate, same difference to me, but yeah.
Ms. Lukasik, there's, it's currently five pennies, but it will be five and a half based on what the state's, aren't they adding a half? No?
No, we're maxed.
Right. You can't, if you took the three pennies, you'd be taking away from her operating.
20%.
Right. So right now, we're at one and a half, we could go to two. There would be no capital, there would be no project grants.
Which is, what was the proposal was, at the TDC was for three years to use the full second penny that normally goes to grants. Considered a, you know, the beach construction being the grant winner for three years.
Right.
Which was reviewed by the TDC, but was by the majority rejected and given a half of that. Now, the supermajority of the Board can override the TDC recommendation. It's, you know, as the Chair, I kind of, I, you know, I look for the discussion here. We have, we have the representatives of the TDC Board are from all those other hotel operators that rely a lot on the project that Amy talked to before about the big lacrosse tournament. So a lot of them aren't dependent entirely on the beach and they're, they're thinking for themselves as, you know, I want to see construction, these grants help me on some maybe City of Palm Coast projects or other things. So that's the dilemma. I still think a three-year, I think it was a reasonable ask for three years, and I made a, I thought I made a really good plea, but it didn't work. But, so that's still a purview for us. And definitely, you know, considering all the other things that we've been reviewing.
So how much would that add?
It's...
If that were to be done?
The guilt for the extra half is another $440,000 a year. So small in the overall bucket, but, but, you know, we're looking at all these different, these different funds. I would say too, I want to, Commissioner Carney talked about the fluid numbers. And I want to make sure everybody understands that when we talk about funding, cutbacks to fundings out of our current ad valorem tax revenue, a lot of these are based on the ad valorem revenue properties increasing plus new construction based on this year. So we're looking at a forecast that isn't favorable for those increasing. So when we do take reductions and base it on this year, there's no saying that that's it, that that's the end of it. Because if housing construction isn't the same as this past year or property revenues decline more, our, where we were basing a total 9% increase is going to come down, which is going to put additional stresses on all the constitutional officers and our other operating. So the forecast, even if we make a lot of decisions to reduce spending on the current ad valorem to what I may say drastic measures, that might not be the end of it because if we're sustaining it, the funding plan off of that, we're looking at potential reductions.
Not only, these are planning assumptions and there's no, there's no contracts or permitting costs. And one of the presentations had cubic yard anywhere from $21 to $39. So these are all fluid numbers on top of pledging ad valorem, which is a fluid number. Tor, I mean, it's going to be one of these projects that I bet every year, we're going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul on. And it's just, it's, it's why we, you know, why I thought we started at the unincorporated to begin with because it was more manageable for us to work there first, but...
Well, I think that's why it's incumbent. That begs the question, then, of having a really good debate up here about the benefits of doing an 18-mile comprehensive plan versus the unincorporated and what that looks like. Commissioner Carney has talked about the 18-mile because you start chopping up the coastline once you get away from the 18-mile plan, which has its own issues. So, I mean, initially, we did. We started off a year ago, say, with the unincorporated plan, but there were, you know, I think all of the municipalities now, especially on the barrier island, have weighed in. And they know that a comprehensive analysis of the beach is going to benefit everybody on the barrier island.
So I guess one of the other questions is, I did not read anywhere, I did not see anywhere, where we have to pledge or have a 100% plan in place to call it a beach management funding plan. I understand the data is there. I understand we may or may not have some flexibility. Again, this, nature is going to determine what happens on this sea line, sea coast, To say that we have to have $17 million in one of these funds by the end of 2025 or 2026, I don't see that anywhere that it, that has to be the plan. If we can come up with the strategy that we need to get to funding, where does it say that we have to fund at 100%? Knowing all the variables that we have, knowing all of the, it's just so many variables. The numbers are big, and I just don't see anywhere that says we have to have this at $17 million a year today or tomorrow or next week. I would like to suggest that if we go back to the old spreadsheets, which, thank you, didn't show up today, that we go back to our main sources that we, I've already discussed. Thank you, Amy, the Fund 1111 for beach, 1109, the upper 10 MSTU, all grants from the state, including anticipated grants, as history will show us that there are grants and that we can receive them. The number here is not zero. I'm sorry. And taking the designated millage from the ad valorem tax that we have already discussed and the percentage of the half-cent sales tax that we've already discussed, enter into, enter local agreement with the City of Flagler Beach, Beverly Beach, and Marineland to assess and manage an MSTU in their areas like we are doing in 20, we are proposing to do in '25, '26. Along with the maintenance of the coast, the beach in their areas and have that in place for '26, '27, and beyond. All of our municipalities should be encouraged to generate their own funding source through local fees. And that could be used to offset the MSTU if they don't want to have their citizens pay the MSTU, or it can act as additional funding. I met with Flagler Beach's manager and their paid parking will probably not be implemented for at least a year to 18 months. As long as our funding plan suggests or mentions other alternatives like an MSBU or a, or bonding, we don't have to obligate to it. We have to just mention it. So the beach management plan, maybe our consultants can help us. The funding plan is an attachment to the beach management plan? Do we have to have a spreadsheet? Do we have to tell the state that we're obligated to $16 million? Can we say we're obligating to $8 million? I mean, is it that black and white? Is a beach funding plan that black and white?
Well, I would say the construction is black and white. So we've got a commitment to the back.
Okay, we got the construction. Okay.
And I think the management plan is based on the best data we have, right? No construction contracts have been let, but it's on the best data that we have moving forward based on the renourishment.
I mean, the funding part. I get the management plan. It's all thought out, it's ready to go, almost, but... go almost. But do we have to commit to all of these numbers right at this moment?
Well, I think there was a pretty good case that talked about the reserves and having available reserves for matching grants. You don't want to be in a position in where you're trying to, at the last minute, make drastic decisions for matching, for the different grants. You mentioned the different grants that are available, state and federal. They all have different matching requirements. So, part of the process is making sure that there is a basis of funds available for those matching grants so that when they are there and we go after them, we have a demonstrated fund in place to offer to match those funds. It's probably the most critical component in getting the free money is having the matching component available and demonstrating that. The, again, the first part, construction, having a plan over the next three years to be able to fund the construction that we have. And then, the more complex part is the management, is the, which I think we've, we've set up a process with each of the municipalities to review this annually. There's a place, there's a process in place to review the management plan and the funding plan annually with all of the different municipalities so that we can keep tabs of this. You know, there's opportunities even to regulate. I know, I know we're looking at other funding options separate from the half penny, but you can manipulate the half penny to shorter timeframes. There's nothing that says this has to be a 20-year timeline. It can be, right? It can be a 10-year plan that coincides with the, our debt being reduced. In 10 years, we get off of our books a $10 million payment in debt that is currently out there. And that 10-year time period could coincide so that the half penny can come off and we transition back to general revenue where we were making that 10 million. There's lots of ways to look at alternate ways within here as well.
Andy, I just want to say, not to argue with you, three months ago, four months ago, when we discussed this at the beginning of our term, I asked you, when can it sunset? If we make a tax, when does it sunset? Because I said, can we sunset it in four years? Can we make it a short-term thing? You said, no, it goes 30 years. And you were adamant about it. Today, you're not adamant about it. I'm not questioning your expertise or your talent, but I'm concerned about what facts are factual and what's not because it can't go both ways. I wanted a short-term element and now that was, that was nixed months ago. And this is why we're going in a circle, folks, because there's no facts or fictions at any one time that stays stable in my mind. And as a person who likes to know the facts right up front, so decisions are made properly, which is why you elected me to do this, because of my common sense. And I'm going to make common sense for everybody. No one's more important in this room than anyone sitting here. We're all equal and we're all a community. And that's one of the things that I've been waiting to hear, a shortest period, and now it comes out. So, now I'm a little bit abrupt about it because this was asked months ago and we can, I can assure you, that's what you said. Then somebody told me there were 20-year ones and there were 30-year ones. And I know there was sunsetted, other places could sunset it from all the years of legislation I've done. So, I'm just concerned about what's the facts, what are we dealing with and what are we making true and meaningful?
Well, I know within the recent history is, recent is probably a month ago when we had these discussions, we had a discussion about alternate times for the tax. So, it wasn't just, it wasn't just, you know, six, seven months ago. It was as recently as a month ago where we talked about shorter timelines on the tax. And we've got existing variations on the books. The school tax is a 10-year one that renews every 10-year or comes up for renewal every 10 years. The one the county has for the existing half penny is a 20-year one. So, they are variable.
That was not said three months ago or four months ago, whenever it was. So, now, now it's changeable. I don't like that things are changeable. Once they've been diagnosed as that's it. I just cannot keep, you know, adjusting and adjusting, adjusting to make it sound good. And then, when the reality hits, I just don't want to see us fall into that.
But again, we did have this discussion shortly, not too long ago.
I don't recall that.
It's okay.
Because I have a hard stop.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if, and I thought that was the discussion, that we weren't going to talk about the half penny. There wasn't a consensus to move forward with half penny. So, we had to come up with solutioning out of it. This plan is a broad plan. It requires funding for multiple sources. Our packet even says they wouldn't rely on a long-term plan based on an ad valorem, but we're doing that. These are contracts. They're going, they're going to adjust. We're going to be back here every year adjusting and looking for taking funds from everything. I think, in my opinion, is we should be asking to see what bonding the TDT would look like for construction, if that's even an option. That still comes off the backs of the tourist for the most part and would help alleviate the shortfall within there. What does it look like if we do that? What does it look like if we go up to two pennies? What does it look like doing all this conjunction, going up to two pennies, bonding the TDT, staying flat or increasing the mill for the next years that we're here, increasing the MSBU and MSTU, and then changing out the nourishment plan from a six to an eight year and revisiting that plan on a quarterly or half-year basis while we're here to look at the numbers. I'm trying to think of everything outside the box of the half penny. And there's always going to a special election for the half penny as well. So, that's my thoughts. But I think even when we walk away with some plan here, that plan is going to change and the funding is going to change and we're going to be back here and we're going to be pulling from more and cutting from others. Because it is a plan based on many elements coming together over the years. And while we're at it, it's hard to say that we're going to nail this down to a six-year because the beach will always need to be nourished. So, I don't know why we're at the six years. We just need this much for six years. I guess, I think we're hoping that new revenue comes on board and we'll revisit it. But it's going to be a continuous, no matter what. So, that's something to take into place. So, that was my comments. I don't disagree with Ms. Carney about the municipalities, maybe working on a TU there, helping them get up and running with maintenance down in Flagler Beach. So, those are just my thoughts because we're thinking outside of the half penny, or at least that was the discussion for today. And again, we're here and we don't have numbers in front of us to decide from of what it looks like if we take the extra penny, if we bond, what would bonding look like? What would it look like if we increased the mill quarter? What would it look like if I increase the MSBU $30 a household? We don't have those in front of us to make a decision today, but those are things that probably should have been here when we knew we weren't doing a half penny or at least there wasn't consensus at the time. Those should have been some of the things presented with actual numbers behind it.
You're asking them to present numbers and we didn't even have consensus of what, it's impossible ask.
Right. But, but we did, we did mention bonding. We did mention taking additional pennies. We were right. And we can, we can go back there on this, but it would have helped to know if we're not doing the half penny, which I thought was clear in the last meeting, what would it have looked like if the MSBU was changed? If they thought, we can get there by, but this is what the numbers would look like if it changed or we could get there to back into that if we increase the mill by one or not. You know, it would have helped to have seen some preliminary numbers based on, on the options. And it's just, I'm not, I don't want to argue on it. I'm not trying to argue. I really not.
Right.
I'm just saying it would have helped to get there today in this meeting before July 2nd. And maybe we can get a consensus today on, on some of those options or if you guys want to go back and argue about the half cent sales tax again, that's fine. But those are, those look to me to be the only options here.
Well, the board operates on consensus.
Yes.
I've said that a thousand times. If there is three people that want to come together and give staff direction on what those, and finalize those different things, I think your bonding on the TDC is still a very limited number. So, it's, the TDC is a very small number in this overall process and, and, which is also a process where we can save as we go. So, the bonding.
You don't have to just, well, you don't have to bond just the TDT. There are other revenue sources to bond from. But yes, right, I understand. That's why I'm saying it's going to have to be a, and that's where we look to people to give us numbers and advice is saying, you know, we could think you can get here the least painful way by showing you this bond and showing you if you stay flat, showing if you increase the BU, you might be able to get there. So, that's, that's all. I'm sorry.
So, I would say with the time we have, one, we can, you can think about those things that you want to give direction to. We can open it up to public comment while you are formalizing that. And that way, we can listen to the thoughts of our residents as well while we, while you formulate those.
Well, this is a workshop.
Staff is going to need some definites to be able to do that.
This is a workshop.
Right.
And I want to all keep in mind that everything we're saying is discussion. Nothing is voted on here, right? So, we're not going to take a vote. I want to make sure we're looking into the future because the future is going to change rapidly, I believe, in the next couple of years. And who knows? Maybe we won't have any storms. If you think positive. I'm laughing because I'm from South Florida. I lived storms my entire life. But we can do it in a professional manner. And that's what, you know, my concerns are, to make sure we're doing it all the right way.
Right. And let me clarify, the goal of workshops is to flush information out, to better give staff direction. When we call for consensus, it is a vote, but it's a consensus to move information forward. It is not a vote where we're, we're setting policy. That happens at business meetings. At workshops, we take consensus, which means there's a majority of the commission that is giving advice to the administrator on things that they spend time on. So, I just want to make that clear, that it's really just to give them, right? We're trying to get information that a majority of the commission agrees on and we give them direction. Those consensus votes are only for direction. It's not approving anything.
And then you have the opportunity to review what to go over and explore and study and make a final decision. And that's when the final decision comes out.
Final decisions are in the business meetings.
Is in the business meeting. Right. I just want to bring that forward for a reminder for our guests that are here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Just a word of caution. I've heard the MSBU and MSTU tossed around. We can only apply that to the unincorporated county. That's all we can apply it.
The MSTU can be assessed and applied by the county with an interlocal agreement with Flagler Beach.
Right. That's the key. They have to agree to it.
Well, they agreed, they agreed to our original funding plan several times.
That was the half cent.
No. There was always Greg and MSBU, MSTU, island side, the whole island, barrier island was part of that plan, always, always. Yes, it was. Well, why are you shaking your head? Heidi?
Was it?
Was it or was it not?
We had two different options. So, we started with the unincorporated only. When we presented it to the cities, we had showed 160 per unit on the entire barrier island.
Correct.
So, it was part of that calculation. It's a small percentage of it. When I'm looking at the numbers now, it generates, at the 160, it generates about 1.6 million a year. If you were to increase it to Commissioner Pennington's $30 per unit, you're now closer to 1.9, almost 2 million. So, it helps.
But that includes Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach and Marine Land.
Entire barrier island.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, we happen to magically do interlocal agreements for half of what we do in, in the county. I met with Mr. Martin and he said, bring it to me, is what he said. They got to pay to play. They got to pay to play. So, and I'm not so sure that they said no to MSTU. I did not hear them say that. I could be wrong. Beverly Beach had a little bit of an issue bringing, what do we do with the people that can't pay the $160 a month or a year? I'm sorry. And there was going to be something worked out amongst the municipality. But I've checked with legal. It is totally legal. If we have an interlocal agreement and we go to these municipalities and ask if we can assess and we can control it, that we can get it done.
We're chairless. I guess Commissioner Pennington steps up now.
No, we were, I mean, so I, knowing that and if that's the case, I agree with Ms. Carney that we should attempt an interlocal with the municipalities regarding the TU.
Be done until next year because we're behind, we're behind.
We're out of the window now.
But we get, we get some leeway. We get some time. We don't get the money and we adjust. I.
So, is that specific to, does it get, does it go all in on the plan or is that specific to be applied towards their maintenance, their, however the interlocal goes?
My original comment said to set up the MSTU and the maintenance. And again, I would like to clarify that Flagler Beach was, it was quoted on the radio that Flagler Beach is not maintaining their current project. Therefore, the Army Corps could just shut us off at any time. I met with Mr. Martin and presented the 182-page document called Operations and Maintenance. This goes out, this manual goes out to everyone that has an Army Corps project. And he confirmed with me on page 12 that the City of Flagler Beach is doing all six items on that required maintenance. So, I think there must, there must have been misinformation or misspeaking, but Mr. Martin assures me that Flagler Beach. Now, I personally would like to see the county step up and meet with the city to affirm what I'm saying and to also assist on, at this point, it's turtle season. There are no, there's no damage done to the beach at this point, but they have a beach patrol that patrols the beach every day with the turtles. They're watching the beach project. They have beach cleanup. They have a maintenance. They just added $150,000 to their budget to maintain the dune walkovers. They have a fully engineered walkover. So, if they lose a walkover, they have a new plan ready to go to put up another walkover. So, I think before things are said about Flagler Beach's lack of maintenance, that our county should step in and meet with the city and go over what exactly their plan is. But until there's an interlocal, putting it back to the county, Flagler Beach is prepared and they are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
All right. Ansley Renkey, Coastal Engineering Administrator. I just wanted to differentiate between the two words, maintenance, two definitions of the word maintenance that we're using. So, there's two very different things happening here when we talk about maintenance. One is the maintenance that you're referring to with the Army Corps of Engineers project. That's maintaining the project, knocking down the scarps that form for the turtles, replacing signage, post and ropes, things like that. I have, I have met with Dale Martin and I know Jason Harris spent a long time meeting with him as well about what needs to happen for the maintenance of the project. There's another definition of maintenance when we're talking about beach management plans, beach nourishment and the maintenance. And the word maintenance in. And the word maintenance in that essence is renourishment, which is a big, you know, we're in the millions of dollars at that point. I just wanted to differentiate that.
I think we resolved that a while back. I think we did resolve that a while back, that, um, that, that the interlocal that was written with Flagler Beach did not refer to the renourishment part. That is always going to be a county project. It's always going to be a part of the county. So we, we resolved that. It was only what was formed or identified in that, in that operating and maintenance manual.
It's the operation and maintenance that Flagler Beach is responsible for. Correct. But I wanted to put that out for the public too, because it can be confusing.
Commissioner Pennington.
In case, because I have a hard stop. So in case this comes up, um, so just off, in consensus, I do agree that we should entertain a discussion about doing a TU down for Flagler Beach and the municipalities down there. So should you go for consensus for that or anyone? But I do agree, I don't know why we're not having that discussion.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know whether we, the Berry Islands were getting the MSBU in place of additional.
I think if you, Ms. Carney, I don't know if you want to go over again, but you, there's a possibility of doing a TU to help them specifically with their maintenance, correct?
Well, the TU is for both. There's still more construction needed down there. I don't know, I, I, I think it's already taken care of, but yes, it would be the ongoing maintenance slash whatever they need. I mean, it's going to be part of it. There's part of Reach 2 or 3, Ainsley, I don't remember, but down where the 1.2 is for the Army Corps Secant Wall, that's got to be worked into one of these plans, one of these reaches. It's going to involve, it's just pay to play. It's just, they need to get on board.
Yeah. There's a large portion of Reach 2 that is in the city of Flagler Beach.
Right.
We can go to the map and look at it if you want to see that again. But there's, there is a section, I guess it's about what, one and a half miles north of the pier that's in Reach 2. And then that southern section down where the Secant Wall is, is also in Reach 2. And moving forward with Reach 2 and the construction, we've had a long discussion about what was going to be included in that, but that's the five and a half mile project that's coming up. A part of that will be in the city of Flagler Beach. And there's a cost associated with that and the maintenance cost to re-nourish it for Flagler Beach.
All right. Is everybody okay if we go to public comment? Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. And so if you have something you'd like to say, come on, work your way up to the, to the mic and. Although it doesn't need to be said, please state your name for the record.
My name is Suzanne Johnston. I've lived in this county almost 76 years, part of that time in Flagler Beach. So I'm very familiar with all of this. You know, you've got a lot of people that say, I don't go to the beach, I should not pay taxes. And I get that. Ever since the Jaws movie came out, I'm not going to the beach either. And you know, you think about it though, my property is worth more because of the location of the beach. Pretty much every home that's listed for sale gives the number of miles to the beach. If my home was in the middle of the state, it would be worth less. So the beach is very, very important. It's all location, location, location. But everything has to be super fair and you've got to do something. So you look at the property tax method and adding that in the millage rate. Now you're sitting at 7.8695 mils. 10 mils is the most that you can go to. If the values drop or like, um, you see on Facebook all the time, DeSantis saying, homes should not pay taxes. You know, and there's a big movement to totally take off the residential property. We don't have enough industrial or commercial to offset that. You would be in big trouble. Two years ago, the big cry was to not tax personal property. Your largest taxpayer, Florida Power and Light, is on the personal property tax roll. So you've got to be super, super careful of tying up all of that. And you think about it, if it's in the millage rate, two identical homes side by side, the taxable value is based on how long they've owned it because of the way our tax structure is. That's not fair for beach renourishment. So, you know, and then you think about the tourist tax. Now that's about $4 million a year that's collected. It went way down during COVID. It went way down during the fires. And then if there's a bunch of hurricanes, it goes down. And I studied and studied to try to see if there was a hurricane on the West Coast, did we pick up those visitors? And there really wasn't enough information for me to come up with that. But if you're counting and desperately need the money, you have to know that tourist tax is based on what the weather is and you have no control on that. So that makes it sort of an iffy thing. You look at special assessments. Now there's two types. MSTU, Municipal Service Taxing Unit, is based on a value. So here you are again, trying to have people pay based on how long they've lived here. So you've got to think about that. MSBU is a benefits tax and it's by unit, by front foot, by square foot or whatever. Now I can tell you, when the consultant came up, I guess it was probably two years ago or so, came up with the method that they wanted to use, I was wild. Talk about unfair. It would not be on the tax roll. You take something like the apartment house by Publix, that was one commercial unit. You take a big condo unit in the south end of Flagler Beach, each individual condo unit would be paying. So where is that fair? Oceanside Restaurant would pay less than my 1,100 square foot condo. Both on the west side of A1A. That's not fair. A 9,000 square foot house would pay the same thing as an 1,100 square foot condo. Not fair. It has to be fair. I thought, well, this is just no big deal. I'll sit here and come up with a special assessment role and how it should be done. Well, I gave up. There's really no way to come up with it fair.
Mrs. Ann, I do have to go to the rest of our public comment.
I'm sorry?
We, we do have to go to the rest of the public comment.
Well, I'm almost through. If I can finish up.
Out of, out of due respect for, for the length of service you have given the county, I will let you finish up.
Thank you. I want to talk about the sales tax method. And my concern has always been low income, fixed income, and how something affects these residents. That should be important to every one of you. If you take, and I used $100 as a special assessment, you run the formula, that's really $20,000 that they would buy in taxable goods. $20,000. So the Census Bureau in '23, a single person is $35,786. They're not spending $20,000 of that in taxable goods. Would they spend a third of their money in taxable things? No. I mean, $20,000 is a lot. So the low income people would pay less using this method because they have less money to spend. So to me, that helps because the tourists are going to pay. It really is the fairest way. And people are going to gripe regardless. Anytime you raise taxes, they're in an uproar. Nobody has ever gripped for me as much as my husband. And that's a long time of that. It's a hard decision. You have to do something. But with the sales tax, I have a choice. You have a choice on how much you pay. You can eat out and pay sales tax, cook at home and not pay sales tax. You have a choice. I'm glad I'm not sitting up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, public. It's hard to say no to Ms. Suzanne Johnson and for as long as she has been our tax collector, forgive me, but it was okay. I was proud to give her some extra time there. So it was great information.
Robin Paletta Halifax Plantation. This has been a very informative morning. Great minds must think alike because I was thinking, in the nine years that I've lived here, and oh my gosh, they've gone by quickly, um, the county has, as, as far as I can tell, never raised its ad valorem, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, tax base. And as she pointed out, Ms. Johnson pointed out, we have a ceiling of 10 and we're at around 7. I know it's anathema to many people about raising taxes, but let's be, let's be factual about our resources here in this county. It's the natural beauty and it's the damn beaches. And if the damn beaches go, the people are going to go elsewhere where there's good beaches for swimming and where there's facilities. And nobody has talked about the fact that we're about to build a brand new, yay, 800-foot pier, concrete pier to replace the 100-year-old structure. And that's going to be another whole ball of wax, but I, I digress. The county has coasted in the last nine years and not raising the millage rates. In fact, they've reduced it by a very minuscule percentage because of the rising property values. Property values are flattening. I'm seeing it in my neighborhood in Halifax Plantation Phase 1 and in Phase 2. We have a pantload of new construction going in on the west side of Old Kings, and that's south of 100 where Crest Winds and Radiance are building. And I want to thank Adam Mengele, I want to go on record for thanking him to enforce preserving clumps of woodland in that property. Thank you, Adam. But my key question today is, is how much would a half mil increase dedicated or a full mil? I mean, might as well butt, bite the bullet. This is, as has been pointed out, going to be an ongoing issue. It's never going to go away. How much would a half mil or a full mil generate for the county to be able to use to pay for ongoing maintenance and to set aside? It would be clean. I'm seeing commissioners up here futzing around, oh, we'll pull from the tourist area. We're going to nix the sales tax. Some people might say that it's regressive. Renters will pay for that name knowledge increase because it will be factored into the cost of doing business of renting that unit. And you're going to pull from here and you're going to pull from there. It's a crazy patchwork quilt of trying to fund present and future maintenance and replenishment needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to know those numbers though. Maybe Ms. Johnson can come back?
Real quick, a tenth of a mil is how much, Ms. Patino?
We were doing some numbers. So when we were working with some of the scenarios Commissioner Pennington had mentioned, the .5 mils would give you a little over 8 million.
Hello, my name is Dennis Clark. I'm representing scenic A1A Pride and I will try to take my three minutes. We, we wrote you all a letter, May 27th, and there's some very pertinent points in there. I just wanted to refresh your memory on a few of them, not the whole thing, of course. Scenic A1A is a national scenic highway. It's an all-American road. It's, so we are stakeholders in, in the beach. Not, not only that, but to preserve, protect and enhance the A1A scenic and historic coastal byway. It's a big part of our county and a big, and a tourist attraction. You all know that we had, well, we have, it's also an evacuation route as well and supports commercial and residential. You, you know that we had the breach at Washington Oaks in Malacantra where A1A was flooded and it killed, the salt water killed thousands of trees. You remember that? Now that, that's a huge impact and that was, you know, we, that was a dune breach. We need better, we need something more than, than dunes to protect our, our county. We also realized that in 2024, we had over 940,000 visitors and they spent, as Amy said, $800 million in Flagler County, supporting 9,700 jobs, generated over 890 million in total economic impact. So that tourism is, is extremely important to Flagler County and you know, most of that's the beaches. Beach tourism is the lifeline of our local economy and the economic impact that visitors extends from supporting local businesses to the buying of goods and services by these businesses and their employees. We can take advantage of significant state and federal funding. We know that if we lose that money, we're in, we're in bad shape. We need to, to try to hold on to the money that we're getting from the federal and state sources. We know that every other county in Florida has an active beach management program and many of us are, and many, many are using the extra half cent sales tax already. We, I just wanted to say one more thing. The staff did a remarkable job at putting together a comprehensive plan for a very difficult subject. And I think the half cent sales tax would be the least painful and the fairest method. And I believe all, all the municipalities have already agreed to it. So I think we should support all of, all of the constituents in the county on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Lynn Bravo-Rosewater and I live at 200 Ocean Quest Drive. I want to say that one of the things that struck me when they first talked about renourishment was that there was going to be a one-time, you know, taxing the hammock. There is all kinds of people of different, living in different residents.
Ms. Rosewater.
Pardon me?
The speaker. We, we can't hear you. We can't hear you. Thank you.
If you put this, the tax on, so it affects whatever the cost of your building is, and you need this money every year, then you are really unfairly dealing with the fact that all use of the beach is people who live on the hammock. And so it just seems to me that it's not a one-time. It's an every-year tax increase. And I think that is unfair because the beaches, the people that come, they don't pay any money. They don't pay for their trails. They don't pay for parking. The fact that this nourishment is needed has to be more spread out. And I think that the half-cent sales tax does that. I don't think it's fair to take one area and say, you're getting taxed every year because we've got to put this much money away a year in order to have the amount we need when we have to refurbish again. So I don't know if that's been thought about. But I think it's a very different thing to say one time, and by the way, every year. You're going to be taxed for that. And what I want to mention, because the state came out and said that condos, because of the condo that collapsed, have to have $250 million in reserves. All the condos on the hammock, OK, had to get money to meet that reserve. And the owners are paying a lot now in special assessments. Ours is going to be individually $25,000. So I just think that you need to look at what's the fairest way to do this. And it doesn't seem to me that you take one area that already gives you 30% of the money that goes to the county. It just seems to me that it's punitive. And that's why I'm thinking you need to look for something that's more widespread. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ron Long, Auto Drive, the sole voice from the West, with the exception of Commissioner Pennington. I got to say, I'm very disappointed. I came here with high hopes who were going to have all kinds of new numbers, new figures, new ideas. But it looks like we got the same stuff again, different font, little bit different layout. But again, we're being told this half-cent tax is the only way to go. We know, as Commissioner Richardson, this isn't going to be done in 10 years. This half-cent tax will go on forever and ever and ever. No tax has ever been taken back off. If it's not used for the beach, it'll be used for something else. I'm being told if we do this tax, then it'll free up money from the other half-cent tax to work on maybe some roads out in my area. Do I have confirmation that that is going to be used for my area? Or will, like other tax money and TDC money, it just goes out to the beach? Just like the $500,000 that went out there from the tourist development money that could have put in lights in the Palm Coast parks and stuff? But we threw it at the beach again. The beach gets so much attention, I just, I can't see it. Again, living from the West, I'm a hard sell on this half-cent tax. I was, at least Commissioner Pennington did have some other ideas she threw up before she had to leave. But I was hoping for something more, and I really didn't get it. I got, I'm sorry, but I'm left lacking, guys. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Don't be shy.
I have a little voice problem, so I'll apologize in advance. Some random thoughts, really some random thoughts, kind of listening to everybody today. One random thought is I count votes. That's what I do. Another random thought I have is we have to get something done. Absolutely have to get something done. I've heard discussions on all kinds of areas, Flagler Beach or whatever. But I got to tell you, Flagler Beach already has had a re-nourishment project. Reach 2 is on its way funded. The odd duck out is Reach 3, which is a substantial portion of your tax base that is not funded. I mean, that's kind of what my reality is. And that has got to get done. But again, I count votes. I think that another random thought listening today is that a lot of talk about, you know, the home run hit. I don't think this is a home run hit. I think that you are going to be taking from a lot of different programs, as I understand it. I come from a corporate environment. A corporate environment is is we don't solve big problems necessarily by looking for that big home run hit. You know, it's usually like a lot of basics that kind of get you there. Another random thought is, is that, you know, I respect the certainty from a forecasting standpoint you're trying to do. Again, I kind of come from a corporate environment. A corporate environment is I take risk, OK? You can't hit a target unless you set it. So if you're looking for more state funding or if you're looking for whatever kind of funding source you could, then that's the policy thing that this group has to do in terms of how much risk you're willing to take and then putting the resources around it to drive the number. Again, I think that, I don't like to speak in terms of disappointment because I think we're just making the sausage today. You know, I think we're making the sausage today. But this board has to absolutely come together on an idea and move forward because we at Hammock Dunes, again, I'm sorry, I'm Greg Davis Hammock Dunes, we cannot wait any longer. We absolutely cannot wait any longer on this. Can't kick the can any further on us. So again, come together on an idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, everybody. My name is Marian Manley. I'm sitting here listening. And the first thing I had on my list is random thoughts. My first random thought is, thank God we've come to this day because I don't know how many years I've been waiting for us to have a management plan. We have a management plan. Now we have a difficult subject, funding. And I see what you're facing. And the taxes are a reality. And if we have to pay taxes, we have to pay taxes. And there are places that are less, hurt less some people than others. And I think the tourist taxes are one of them. But I'm sure there are others. And I'm just happy that we're all here. I'm happy that we have a country that I can get up and talk to my government people. And I would like to personally thank Mr. Hanson, Commissioner Hanson, for all the work that he's done all these years, all the meetings that he's gone to and explained, tried to explain to people like myself what the county has been trying to do. We've reached a point. Let's do it. Let's get it done. And coming out of this meeting, I think the headline should be, "Beach Plan Going Forward", and go on from there and add your adjectives. But thank you, folks, and we can do it.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Hamilton, current resident in the Hammock or Island Estates. I'm probably going to run out of time, so I'm probably going to have to send you a note afterwards explaining what I'm trying to say. But I think thanks for having this meeting. I think it has been very helpful to actually go back to square one to see where we get here. Even though I've been involved all these years, I forget so much about it. So it's good to have that reminder. What's clear to me is that the plan is a living, moving document and that therefore it's not, OK, we've got this far, let's do it and go. And you've talked in the past about the deeming cycle. I mean, my background, although a large part of it was financed with IDT. I was their senior vice president and comptroller. Several years were spent also in business analysis and in continuous improvement. You call it DOGE these days. Back then, we just called it continuous improvement. The deeming cycle basically says that everything you do, it's called a PDSA cycle, your plan. You do something. You act, you then study it and what happened, and then you act. And that may be act by doing more of it or maybe act by revisiting your plan. You are in that cycle. You're going to go round and round, and you're going to be repeating it every year as we see what happens. Because we've done work now. We've done Reach 1. We've done the big beach theory down in there. We've done seawalls and other parts. Did they work? Did they do as they done? Moffett and Nichols has basically said they're going to be redoing that analysis. We're going to see if the sand moved out and come back again, this theory of equilibration. Is that what happens here? Or do our currents move the sand further south? We've already put something like, I'm not sure whether it's 12 to 20 cubic yards per foot of sand in several efforts of burn re-nourishment, which have moved offshore. And did it come back? I heard one comment, yeah, it did come back a bit. But let's do that. You're going to be planning that all the time. What you do need to do, though, obviously, you've already agreed. I think all of you agree, something has to be done. So to accuse you of saying, oh, we're going to just abandon the beach is unfair. You are trying very conscientiously to work out a plan, and you agree it should be done, and it should be done for the whole 18 miles of the beach. I agree with you on that. So we're going to need to keep evaluating that. And we also know we've got to find some money. That's what your discussion, and we still haven't got that plan. But you will need to set up a fund, a reserve fund. You need to be funding it by targeted amount each year, $10, $15, $20 million. I think that fund should be for resiliency, not just the beach. It should be for resiliency in stormwater as well. And where you've already charged people, MSBUs and things, not Marineland Acres people, Steve Davis and the Painters Hill Seawall District. You've got to be careful that you can't go and charge them more for what you're already charging them. So at that point, I'm out of time. You're not going to make a decision today, I hope. And therefore, I'll put some more thoughts on paper and send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ert, Cali del Sur. I think we're all in failure to launch. We've been adolescent county, high schools over. And we're moving from a small county up to a big county. You're not going to get the, I'd say, support from your parents, people paying more of the grants that you had before. So I think it's time to take a big step. So I think I should propose a specific plan. I think you should stop worrying about your political careers. I think you should sacrifice yourselves if necessary because the citizens are willing to sacrifice themselves now. That's what they're telling you when they're coming up to the microphone. You should do a lot of things at the same time and overwhelm the things that you face going forward as a county, going from small county to big county, dealing with the shoreline, dealing with the road issues out in the West. And the way to do that is to put in place the unincorporated MSBU-TU. It's formulated. It was surveyed. It's all done. You should go get the ILA for Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach and put that in place as soon as you can. And I would recommend that you put in place the half-cent sales tax. You might not do that by August. You might do that by the end of the year. You might want to do it by referendum. You might want to do it by supermajority vote. But play that future game when that game arrives on the schedule, not when at one time. You should try to face this with courage, and you should take the risk on our behalf. Lead us forward. Please, the people are telling you to take the half-cent sales tax. A third of the community is going to come forward, and they're going to say, we don't want that. We need your leadership to show why that's the right answer. Explain it again and again and again and put it in place. But the immediate things that you have to do by August is to put in this place, get the MSBU and the TU, get the ILA so that Flagler County, Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach can join this so that we get immediate money in. That's $8.2 million from the unincorporated immediately and somewhere around a million and a million and a half from Flagler Beach very, very soon. That shows the state that you're willing to put this schedule in for Phase 2 and Phase 3. If you shy back from this, you're showing overwhelming weakness. You're not showing overwhelming strength. Please lead us forward in the discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Garrison, Hammock Dunes these days.
Morning.
Good morning. Hey, I got a suggestion, which I agree with. I agree with David that it is time to act on the half cent. But maybe it's the shift. Maybe you guys need to shift your thinking. For this gentleman here is maybe the half cent gets spent on a broader scale instead of on the beaches, and then something changes for the beaches as far as other funding that makes available. So is that clear? So basically, I'm saying, use the half cent, spend it on a broader county program. But maybe then whatever money that makes available from the counties, for the county, from other funds, maybe use that for the beaches. Is that an idea to throw out there for you guys to consider? Thanks.
Thank you.
I get to say good afternoon now. Jay Gardner, Flagler Beach, on the mainland side. Might even be the property appraiser sometimes. Being on the mainland side, I would not get hit with that little, you know, the area where you just take the coastal side. But I'm against it. I don't think that's fair. I mean, the people living on the ocean are paying a lot of tax. You can do the math on that pretty easily. I think everybody has been said more than once today. As Johnson pointed out, every property is affected by the beach. If it wasn't for the beach, basically, we'd be Putnam County. So the beach is very important to us. You have a $12 million short every year, is what I understand, if I'm right on that. .677 mills would pay for that. But if the half-penny sales tax would pay for that, and everyone would be paying, based on what you buy and sell, tourists would be paying. And I don't see that as a problem. It's like someone pointed out a choice. I think that would be the easiest way to do it. I don't know if you're going to get money from other sources, do more than one funding source. But the half penny would be fair and a choice. And we do need to take care of the beach. I think it's very important for you guys to come together on that and take care of the most important asset we have in this county. The reason this county is what it is is because of that beach. So hopefully, y'all can come with that versus picking on somebody just because their proximity. I don't see that as being fair. Everyone in this county is affected by it. And someone out in the West County may pay less tax if you did the .677 mills. But I am absolutely for the half penny sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please. All right. Keeping that window open. All right. Thank you all for, we'll go ahead and close public comment. So the next part is our internal discussion here. I think there's a few things, right, that I think we addressed the, just going off a public comment, some of the questions. The, Mr. Gardner answered it. One of the questions, which was .677 mills in a property tax increase fills the gap. But also, in doing the analysis, But also in doing the analysis, a tenth of a mil, as we do our calculations, a little over a million a year, 1.4, 3, 4, something in that respect. So you can do your math moving up. We didn't, you know, I'd have to ask the commissioners to my right. I mean, there is discussion to answer the question about a larger scale plan. And to answer, I think, Mr. Long's question, there is a, a discussion on a broader use as an infrastructure. If the half penny was infrastructure, we didn't, it was clear we're not talking half penny. So I would have to beg my commissioners to my right if they wanted more information on that, if they wanted to talk about it or not. But, because we were looking at other options today, but there's been internal discussions about a broad, having it a broader application. Once the half penny, if the half penny is adopted, there's a broader application countywide on infrastructure. But I'll only, I'll only bring that up if Commissioner Carney or Richardson want me to bring it up. See, what was the other? No, not dividing, but you specifically, that you didn't want to talk, so I'm respecting your wishes.
I'm not, I'm, I don't mean that in a negative tone, okay? I'm just, I heard three people.
I'm trying to walk a fine line as best I can.
Andy, I heard three people out of five people, I've heard, I've heard division, and I'd like to say that we are a team and a unit. I could talk about division in this room right now, because I don't know that, looking at this audience, other than those people that are hired, how many people live outside the barrier island that are here to speak? And I don't want to bring it up as a us against them type of thing. I don't like that. I don't like us vying against each other. I think it's a community and we all have to stand together. I'm tired of hearing the rhetoric of what's important to me is all that matters. It's not what's important to me. And the people that call and say no to me every day, no taxes, thank you for doing that, please stand strong. It's just as strong as the people that come here, but it might be in your self-interest more so than in the common interest. And I'm not saying one person is right or the other person's right, but I'm allowed to have my opinion. And I don't, I don't really know what everybody else's feelings or, you know, so forth. But I'm doing my due diligence at looking, and you don't know the phone calls I get, the emails I get. None of it is brought up here of how many people. So the people that are coming up here, I'm assuming mostly live on the barrier island. And we are here to protect everybody. So I'm just not saying no, I'm not saying yes. This is a very heavy decision for someone who's just getting in this seat comfortably to make on everyone's behalf. And I have to respect that we have 136,000 residents. And I see the same people here, week after week, and went to workshop after workshop. And most of them live in their communities right on the ocean. So I'm going to leave it at that. But I don't like us dividing our board. I don't want this board to be an angry board, a fighting board. That's not how we operate professionally. So I will, I appreciate the respect, Andy, I do. I appreciate your leadership. And I'm not, I'm not questioning it. I just don't like the words of division, because we can, we can always point out division. Let's, let's join, let's join hands and do the right thing for everybody. That's my concern right now.
Thank you. And, and I will, right, somebody said we're making the sausage. And, and believe me, when government's making the sausage, it's the ugliest thing to watch. It's, it's not fun at all, which is what we're doing up here today. And in regards of an alternate plan, you know, in, administration was in a tough position to be able to just come up with the alternate plan when the idea behind today was to go over those different funding options, put some numbers to those in hopes that maybe there is consensus on which ones are palatable to, to the majority. We've, we've talked about the different taxing units. And ultimately, there's got to be a plan, a defensible plan that we come up with, no matter how we fund it, in order to alleviate the concerns of our state and federal funding partners. We get the most money out of this through our federal and state partners. And by having a, a defensible plan, they're going to see right through. If we're trying to make some type of mirror game with funding, they're going to see right through it in a heartbeat. And they are going to know that it is not viable. So the most important thing we can do is, is no matter how we fund it, it has to be defensible and, and, you know, by using the expert opinions from our staff and from the consultants, they're the ones that are going to be going Tallahassee or Washington DC or through our representatives to get the additional funds. And, and they're going to have to explain it, that we've got a viable plan. It's not a year-to-year plan. Now, it can be changed year-to-year, we can analyze it year-to-year, but we need a long-term funding plan in place that even the MSBUs can be adjusted year-to-year. It's, it's, it's a functioning, flexible plan, but we've got long-range commitments that we have to, we have to meet in order to be able to get our federal and state partners to buy into what we're doing. And I think, right, so looking at all the other options, I think if Commissioner Pennington's not here, but there's a consensus to find ways to fund it. And staff has, has proposed a lot of the individual plans that, that even our expert, our bond council has, has offered their opinion of bonding is not the viable or most cost-efficient solution. But it sounds like there's still a push to bond something that bonds don't necessarily match up for. But we've got, we've got to come up with, you've seen the drastic too. So from, from the, from the doable to the absurd, staff has, has given you some parameters of what, fund it with a 10% cut to all constitutionals in the county. Well, we're already trying to make hay with a $3 million deficit for this budget. Lord help us if you're trying to make me go negotiate with the sheriff on a 10% budget cut. Or any of the other constitutionals. So you, you've seen, you know, and 20% from just the county just eliminate the strategic plan that we worked on. We've, we've crafted a strategic plan to try and meet all of the different aspects of county government and what we fund for services to our community in a, in a way that is workable. But we can, you know, we can abandon and put aside the strategic plan to fund the beach, but I don't think that that is what our residents expect us to do either. So I think workable from this is trying to get, if you want staff to come up with some additional funds through, I think I've heard TDC, worst-case scenario of TDC, maybe bonding issues, but I mean, bonding is just debt. We got to pay that back. So it's, it's, it's receiving an upfront money for dedications of future revenues that, it's of our existing revenue. So, and then we're paying potentially taxes off of it. But we don't need a significant portion of it upfront. Most of it is built into the maintenance plan. I think I've done enough talking. I just want to try and give staff direction. It's, we, I think I've heard it, some frustration from, from our public speakers in that we, we need a workable plan. So if it's not the half penny, I, I just need some additional guidance on what to tell staff.
One thing I, I didn't bring up because we got on to so much, there was a lot going on this morning, right? But we have a lot of projects that may have been misconstrued prior to something I had said. We have a lot of projects. This is the list of projects that we have for 2025. It's not one or two items, it's probably closer to 30. And we can defer some of them. I never said to remove them or get rid of them. Postpone some of them to maybe transfer some of those costs that would be going this year for what we need now. I don't understand how we can't sometimes use some of those, for instance, well, I can go over this. I'll go over this with the administration, because it's not necessary that I sit here and tell you every little detail that I've been looking at. But those are some of the things that we could do where I could possibly see us reserving that timeframe for a later date. Because if the emergency is now, let's get through the emergency so we can plan to go past that. That's just my thoughts at the moment, that I didn't share earlier. Just due to the lack of time and, and discussion of people smarter than me.
Well, my comment to that is, if you do that, you can put them off for, for one year, two years, three years, how much, six years? What we have to establish here is a continuous source of fund every single year, so that we're not, every single year trying to come up with, oh, we'll delay this one, delay that.
I got it, but we've talked about it being a living thing, that it's going to be changing every year, no matter what.
We don't have one.
All right, all right, hold on, hold on.
So my thought, my thought is, and especially after reading the, the white paper that Kim put in there, and then listening to our advisors, the only answer, the only solid answer to this is to create a new stream of money. And, and there's, and in my mind, there's only two ways to do that. You can do the half cent sales tax, or you can increase your ad valorem taxes. You have to, you have to establish a stream of money that will be there every single year, going out to six, 10, 20 years, whatever we decide. So if, if you do anything else, anything else, you're robbing the taxpayers of services of one kind or another that we have promised to do through our strategic plan or our long-term plan, or our flood, our stormwater plan. We have all these plans in place that are doing the right thing for this county, the right thing for our taxpayers. And if, and if we stop them and just quit doing them, like quit, just quit doing roads, just stop, which is one of the options I heard, but it just doesn't make sense to me. So especially the, the white paper that Kim put out, that, that, I read it, I had to read it again. I said, boy, that just points right to the half cent sales tax. That, that paper says that's what you ought to do. And.
But how does?
I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that doing anything other than either raising the ad valorem, whatever number makes it work, or doing the half cent sales tax is irresponsible, because we're cutting services to the county. And we're cutting, we're cutting, just eviscerating our strategic plan and eviscerating our stormwater plan that we've put in place and to serve the taxpayer and fix problems that we've got to fix. That, that has to keep going. Those plans have to keep going, or we're not, we're not doing our job for the county. So again, the only solution to this is to create new money. If you don't do that, again, you're just going to kill the, all the plans that we have in place. Right now, a lot of work by our staff, putting these plans in place and funding them so that we serve the people of Flagler County and fix problems and have a plan to fix the problems. And we have that now. We have a good, solid plan. So the strategic plan is working, the wastewater plan is working, the stormwater plan is working. So.
You can't escape it.
So I think it's the only option we have. So, Mr. Chairman, that's enough. Thank you for the time.
All right. This is the making of the sausage. This is not fun. It is not pleasant, but has to be done. If we, if we leave and, and abandon this, we are not solving a problem.
Okay.
You may not agree with Mr. Hanson.
The problem that this county, that the media has right now is the general public believes that the only way, the only funding source in this plan is the half cent sales tax. You got to read the articles, we all saw the articles, you all saw social media. The half cent sales tax is but one piece of seven plant, seven items in our plan. It is not the beach funding plan. It's one part of it. One. Heidi had put aside 5 million from 2025. Part of that was used for the emergency beach, I'm sorry, dune project. There is a commitment from the county to put .2 or .18, I can't remember the number, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, I do have it, from the general fund. There is a Fund 1111 and a Fund 101109. The half cent sales tax is not the only part of this. It is, it is a, a part of it, but it doesn't get us, we have to have an entire plan. There was some number given out on, on the radio show that we were going to have to cut 88 positions in the city, I mean, in the county, if we wanted to fund this beach. There, it's misinformation. It is pure misinformation.
But we're not.
No. My plan, my plan, that's fine. I believe, this is fluid. I believe that the state will back us if we look structured, if we look well thought out and well planned, and if we have momentum going forward. I do not believe that we need $20 million in the bank by 2026 in order for the state to talk to Flagler County. I don't believe that. So we fund it this way. We take the MSTU that we already have decided is part or was part of our plan. We take Fund 1109 and 1111. Now, this is contradictory to what was just said, that it must be a constant stream, because in the original plan, it was to stop at three years, but now we're, there is no constant stream of funds here. It is a mixed salad of several different funds. What we're trying to get to is which fund or which source we're going to say okay to. I would never in a million years go to the sheriff and say, oh, guess what? You can't have your 6.2 million in 2025 and you got to cut what you already gave us? It, it's not even a practical solution. So hence, we take what we have, where did I leave off? Tourism, tourism, MSBU, MSTU, I'm sorry, no MSBU, MSTU. Whatever is left in the 5 million that was promised out of 2025, we look at another additional 1 point, or point, I'm sorry, not 1. .14, Heidi, was it? Out of the, that was a, that is, that is a set aside.
Can you go back to the construction side, the slide, the construction slide?
Here it is. I got it. It started out at the, on one of the first slides as .14 mils. It got increased to .2 mils at another slide that I saw at the TDC, so our own slides don't match. We have not landed a deal with FDOT to sustain their seawalls on any of this project. We, but they gave us 1.2 million for the airport, so, you know, we need to, we need to spend that.
We do have a commitment from them, do we not?
No.
When I talked to John Tyler a couple of years ago, he has in his program funding 500,000 annually. It was intended to be for sand in front of his Seekant wall. At the time, he only had one wall. Now they have two. I've had conversations with the new gentleman that took over operations, Jim Stroes, about the need to come together and further those discussions so that we can kind of build upon a plan. But it's similar to what we've heard with DEP, that they typically don't add program, money to their programming until we reach out to them and ask for funding. It's similar to DEP with their parks. So we just need to have a discussion.
Well, I'm ready to go to Tallahassee and ask for it. Anybody else want to go to Tallahassee and ask for it? I mean, we, we have to ask for it. I mean, we, we have to ask for it, but for us to come together and come up with a number that doesn't include all aspects of, of potential funding, and, and to lead people down this rosy path, that the half cent sales tax is going to solve all our problems, it is not going to solve all our problems. So therefore, I come up with 8.5 million in 2026 to get us started on a very fluid plan, in a very fluid situation, but we got it. We got it. We have not looked at one ounce of cut, of our budget. All we've gotten so far is our budgets from our constitutionalists, and that was, that was a, well, whatever it was. There's nobody wants to pay for this. We heard it on both sides. Don't tax the people that are paying taxes already on their house, but go ahead and tax all the tourists. We have to take all of these funds and put them together for, it's not one, one stream. And then I'm going to finish by bringing this back up again, well, I'm going to bring up two things. Number one, the ESL point, point one two five mils is sunsetting. It's going to sunset. That point one two five mils, although not promised today, if the board decides that they will use and allocate point one two five zero and a future date, it is a source of funding. We need to do that. It's not a tax increase, people are already willing and able, or at least willing, to spend it. We need to use that number somewhere in our...
Well, that's a referendum, and that's not unanimous.
Would everybody stop saying that? It's going to sunset, Andy. I don't want the current money in the budget right, I mean, in the fund.
I want it to be renewed, so we have a disagreement from up here at the DICE. I'm not robbing the wetlands protection system that we've established, which is critical and has over 60% support of the public.
All right. So, it's, again, it's a hard-nosed approach, and I will say one thing about the half cent. I had some, I did have it. If this county decides that we have an emergency situation, we can take the whole half cent. I'm not going to play around with municip, with other municipalities that want 80%, then they want 60%, then they don't want to tax their people, and then we don't want to tax our people. It's an option down the road, if we come into an emergency, and we're already in an emergency situation, we, we don't have to by law allocate any percentage if that's the way we apply the half cent sales tax. So, everybody here, or the two people here that want a half cent sales tax, are you willing to do a all-in?
Well, it's an inter-local agreement, you will not get the all-in from the...
Yes, you will. Under an emergency situation, you can get an all-in.
I'd have to defer. I mean, it's, it's an, it's a, it's a negotiated agreement. Well, it's not a whatever, we're, we're talking about...
It is legit, it is a legit option.
Well, I'm asking legal for the opinion on it.
Yeah, let's get the legal, can we get the legal, legal department to give us some guidance on that, please?
That is a, it's based on a taxing statute, the formula of how you divide up the sales tax. And I'm not sure if the state would agree that our local state of emergency could trump the statute. Perhaps there's a way we could reach out to the Department of Revenue to inquire, but sitting here now, I know declaring a late, a local state of emergency allows us to bypass normal rules and protocols. Whether that raises to the level of setting aside a statute of taxation, I'm, I'm a little hesitant, I would want to get some guidance from the state on that before I just said, sure, we can do that.
I guess that's another piece of the bucket in the, that we've been working on all day, right? Possible? Is it possible addition to what we've discussed, or no? If, depending on what the attorney, the, you know, the higher-ups, the Fed say, state says, whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
You're going against statute, is what he's saying, because...
Well, yeah, we would be, what, what she's suggesting is that we set aside the normal rules under statute because of the state of an emergency.
And that doesn't mitigate the other agencies from filing a complaint or a legal proceeding against us?
Well, sure, they could, yeah, yeah. I would want, like I said, I want to ask the agency before we go down that road. It, it's a taxation statute, and the courts construe those statutes strictly. So, it, it would, it would be bold, it would be out-of-the-box thinking, it would, it would be, I think, unprecedented, but we can ask.
Well, what, what's any different from that than us going to, I'm going to use Palm Coast, because that's the big number, right?
Yes.
From us going to Palm Coast and saying, we're going to levy this half cent sales tax because we, we need to help the beach, but you know that formula that we give you every year, that when we send you your money? We, we, we don't want you to use that, we're not going to use that. We're going to ask you for 50%. How is what I just said any different than, other than the inter-local agreement? I get it.
Well, yes, so the difference is...
So, there's a different taxing based on the need, right?
The, the difference is the statute itself allows the locals to agree to whatever formula they want. That's in the statute.
There's a default.
Yeah, right, and what Al is saying is, there's a default formula, if you don't have an inter-local, the statute provides a default formula of how it's divided up, but you can deviate from that through an inter-local agreement, and that's provided for in the statute. But what you're suggesting is setting aside the statute, assuming they don't agree. So, if the city of Palm Coast says, well, no, you can't just take all of it for your beach, then if we were to try to do that, we'd be going against the statute, and the funds come from DOR, they, they collect them, and then they distribute them, so the Department of Revenue would also have to agree.
So, before we leave, we, I don't know that we've come up with additional clarification on staff to be able to come up with a non-half penny funding formula. We have plenty of buckets that we can pull from, but there needs to be clarification on the extent of the buckets. I've, and typically, there's one that starts guiding the others, if it's a bigger chunk, because we, you know, where's, I don't know if I've seen the other slide, but, I mean, what's the limit for the, we have an MSBU plan for the beaches and the municipalities, but if you're talking a taxing unit, what does that look like? How, how much, how much do you think, and that is also in agreement with the city of Flagler Beach?
Correct, so...
So, how much money do we need to generate on top of an MSBU, or are we getting rid of the MSBU? Because we'll have a flat MSBU and then one based on value?
I can have, we have a working spreadsheet that we run different scenarios through, if you want, I can have Jorge bring it up, and we can play around with it, as Commissioner Carney described, with the MSBU, MSTU, the use of both TDC funds to show you the amount that we would have to collect, whether it's, you know, some other source, if you want, it's up to you.
Right, so we have the ability to hash out something here with a spreadsheet.
Chair, so I just want to remind you, the, the benefit unit was established, the Assessment District, in the Hammock area of the Barrier Island. The taxing unit has not been established, and it will be too late to do so this year. We would have to establish that by an ordinance prior to July 1st, and if it's going to include a portion of a municipality, they would also have to approve an ordinance by July 1st. That's so that the TRIM notices can be prepared in time. So, this, that would, the taxing unit would not be online until next year with the revenue coming in November of '26. The special assessment in the Hammock could be levied this September with the revenue coming in this November.
So, through the inter-locals with the other Barrier Island municipalities that we were talking about, the MSBU would have to be done by July 1?
The, the TU, the taxing unit, and they have to...
But part of the plan was a benefit unit that was shared across the entire Barrier Unit, Barrier Island.
That was discussed, that's something that our consultant looked at.
We would still have to go back to the cities, though, because we didn't get permission, so we didn't anticipate collecting that next year. That's why it's delayed, if you go back to the old modeling that we had, we had that starting in 2027, I believe.
Right. But you can do both, is, I guess, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, you can, that's correct.
Okay. So then, we have a finite amount of TDC money that can be used, we have a, a variable amount of MSBU and MSTU money. We've programmed in 500,000 for DOT. We have, the dedicated mils that we've allocated, is that what we've saved, or is that out of this budget?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, the dedicated millage in your plan, was that what was saved from last year, or is that built into this budget that we've prepared and have looked at for this year, for '25, '26?
So, if you look at that point two four mils on that top chart, that's anticipating it in fiscal year '29, we'd have to dedicate it.
Okay.
And you have the two components, so you have the initial construction, which is that three-year piece to the bottom, that one had us coming up with the point one mils.
Okay.
And then the top was the ongoing renourishment.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the number, if we look at the MSBU, in order to go with the scenario where you're applying funds 111 and 109 at the latter years in '29, because we have to use those funds for the construction up to FY '28, you will require a $905 MSBU in order to generate the number up to 1, up to $72 million. So, that's accounting also for the 500,000 that is been talked about from FDOT, but minus any grant money, because we don't know if we're getting money for that. So, what that would do is that, as we get grant money, then we can reduce the amount of MSBU that is used to offset that cost. But based on those three variables that we talked about, 111, Fund 1109, and a point two four mil, you would require about $905 MSBU per parcel to generate the amount of money that is required for the renourishment over the six years.
Does that MSBU go the entire Outer Banks, including Flagler Beach?
That is the entire island.
Including everybody?
This is, this is all the properties on the Barrier Island.
Okay.
And then, the individual, the year-to-year review would be adjusted based upon grant monies that we receive, that would be applied toward this?
That is correct, yeah. We, we're just targeting a number of $72 million. Any other variable we have here will be adjusted year over year, just to make sure that we just collect that amount of money.
And then, go down to the construction?
The construction one, you can see that in FY '26, as Ansley has talked about, and Hamed, generating all these other grant dollars that are in place today for FY '26. We should have a total of 29 million for FY '26 for the construction, and then FY '27 and '28, 8.7 and 4.6, which will make up the 42 million that is required for the construction. So, this is a scenario where it does not include a half cent sales tax. It does include a point two, 2.4 mil, which is going to be taken away and adding to the challenge you have on the FY '26 budget. This number is going to be added on top to that $2.9 million that you talked about last week.
So, where's, in the, this, scroll down? That says, where is the, oh, the balance there shows, there was a 17 million gap in construction. Or what's the other page?
I think the 17 million dollar gap comes from the total number that we had for the project, that was defined as a 17 million dollar gap.
It's on one of the other pages, I don't, I don't remember which one of the slides, it's on the slide presentation.
Yeah, we're going to bring it up. Yeah, so it's, if you look at it, the total initial construction was 120 million dollars, federal and state shares here, then we had a local share of 42 million dollars, and then that's how all these items broke up, because we have some local funding, the 5.5 million dollar, the TDC 5.2 million, and then we have a 17 point million dollar gap. What we did in the spreadsheet is put everything together as what is needed to fund it, so all, some of these elements are accounted for.
Okay, so, go back to the spreadsheet, then?
So, we're looking at the, our target or goal is...
You have some potentials in there.
Right. Yeah, we have some comments here, local funding match.
So, we've got potential targets in there that we, we don't have as part of the 17 million, okay?
Right.
All right.
So, if it's, you know, the pleasure of the board, we can actually do multiple models on, based on the variables you want us to explore, and we can come up with different numbers and different tables. We have a few different ones that we've played with, and we can come up and show the board whatever mix and match you want to have in terms of variables and funding, but under this assumptions that we worked on, the recent ones, we did not consider the half cent sales tax, we just consider other options, and these are the options that we came up with.
On the construction slide, that half cent sales tax, that's the current half cent?
The, correct, this is the current half cent sales tax, yeah, which, in this case, up to the next three years, we'll be taking close to a million dollars out of that for this, for the construction piece of it. And on this model, we're not considering any half cent sales, not even the current one, it's just another model, in order to preserve some of the needs throughout the county, and then just, this is one way of funding it, but it does increase significantly the requirement for the MSBU.
Yeah, the only problem I have with the commitment of the point two four mils is already, as we've seen with this year's budget, that's either a, it's unlikely to be a carve-out, it's more likely to be a millage increase.
Yes, yeah.
And just so that's clear, that this is, this is built potentially on that point two four mil is, is a millage increase and not, not so much as a carve-out, because there's, there's no money to carve out of our existing budget, we're trying to reduce it, and the only way that works is, is another boom cycle.
If we're, we, I, we still have not seen the general fund yet, budget, so we're going to talk about budgets, and that was supposed to be the work... So we're going to talk about budgets and that was supposed to be the workshop after this workshop that we're now having July the 2nd. So what, how much more direction do we need to give? Because we're having a budget workshop on July 2nd. We, we can't, or I can't figure out what is left in the half-cent, the current half-cent sales tax because I don't know what we're spending it for. I haven't seen the capital improvement budget. I haven't seen anything else except the constitutionals. And it doesn't mean we have to accept what the constitutionals gave us. It's just their budget. So I think the beach part of this budget is going to have to go in with the lump sum of all the budgets. And we have to talk about them inclusive.
Don't disagree.
Okay, then we should be done for today. We'll talk about it July 2nd. Have your worksheets ready. We can sit and plug in numbers and we can take it from there.
Maybe it would be helpful to not just look at it as the beach, but I think that you have some significant challenges in the way of infrastructure. So when you look at the current half-cent, you have some huge needs in the way of your roads. We've been working on what a 10-year plan looks like for infrastructure for your roads. Next year, you have 304, which is a major road that's in need of a lot of money. I think it's close to, I think it was like 27 or 28 million. A large portion of that's going to have to come locally because we don't have it in the FDOT five-year plan. So what we've been looking at is not just the beach, but looking at all of our infrastructure needs. You may end up having to, because the need is so great on roads, you may end up having to take out a bond to do some of those improvements. And I don't know if it would help seeing the big picture. As the chair had mentioned earlier, when we look at our debt service, we went over it when we did the one-on-ones, 2033, 2035, you have debt service coming off. If you look at the CRAs and you look at that tax increment financing, the money we give back to the cities, similar situation where we do not collect that tax revenue because it was frozen in time. Those also come off when you see it, 2033, 2035, 2036. In, it's like 10 years roughly, you will not be in the position that you're in. But we do need to come up with some sort of a funding plan that's going to get you through those 10 years. And maybe it would make more sense if you saw that played out. Look at the revenues, look at the expense, look at your debt service, look at how these programs, whether it's the beach, whether it's your road in stormwater, play out over the next 10 years, anticipating what that revenue looks like. And then looking at when that debt comes off or when you recapture those tax dollars back from the CRAs to see, you really need a plan. You need to introduce some sort of new revenue to get you through those 10 years. Without it, you would have to drastically reduce what you're spending on what you're taking in because your ad valorem is used for your day-to-day operations of county government and your constitutionals. Your general revenue, non-ad valorem is pledged to debt. We don't have a lot of capacity there. So short of sacrificing all of the programs for one, which is probably not the best idea, maybe it would be helpful to come back and look at all of them. I don't know if this helps, but I think it would certainly maybe show the bigger picture of, you know, to the point of Mr. Long wanting to know about the roads and what does that commitment look like? You have multiple programs that need dedicated funding that we have not been able to establish. So it's bigger than just the beach.
All right. Somebody mentioned headline. I don't know what the headline is going to be after today. We're, we're still not decided on a, on a way forward with funding. We are going to need some additional non-half-cent scenarios. And we're going to have to put the different types of scenarios, whether we come back for a workshop and we have, each of us has a working spreadsheet or, or send us a working spreadsheet that allows us to, to manipulate and put money from pockets into that. I think, I think if you could do that, that would probably be pretty helpful at this point because we've got limited sources to pull from. And, and I think I would like to be able to have that. And it needs to show where we're pulling money from, from other dedicated areas of need. So it's a kind of a big ask, but you know, if there's a way to, to be able to integrate where those sources are and, and be able to manipulate that spreadsheet to meet our goals and our objective, we're going to have to have something like that. Though I, is that, but I need other people weighing in because I, I need to make sure that we are giving staff the right direction.
I'd like to get the true number as well of how much we are planning or discussing planning yearly. So how it balances out. I'd like to see how it balances out. Does that make sense? Or is it just going around in my head?
If I can.
Because I get numbers and numbers and numbers and numbers and then they're changed and then they're different and it's going to be a variable regardless of what we say. But at least we would have a basis from where we could go year after year after year, rather than, you know, well, this year we need this and next year we should need this. And, you know, that's great. We need to know what we have to plan over the long period of time. That's, you know, that's my, that's my concern, that we get a balance. But I've heard today, 17 million, then, then, then there's the 17.5. And just as what happened minutes ago, I'd like to know a number so I can think within the numbers in reality rather than supposed. And that's the way you get definition. I have no definition of numbers of what we're really doing here. So if I knew how much we're anticipating annually, what we're going to be spending roughly, at least we can more, go from there. I know I'm talking in a circle right now, so I'm going to just be quiet and let you think about what I just said. And I'll let Kim say what she had to share.
Okay. I think the biggest takeaway I've got from today, and I want to thank our consultants for coming back. Thank you, Ansley, for putting everything together. Thank you. And looking forward to working down the road on Reach 3. Is that we, the biggest takeaway is, is we have to have a viable plan for our state and federal partners. We, we can't put something together on hopes and wishes. So we have to back it up and, and be able to present that in order to get those additional grants and opportunities that are out there. And I know there's, I know we're working on a lot of it. There was, in Jorge's spreadsheet, there's a list of different grants that we're pursuing. They don't have numbers in them yet, but as soon as those come in, and if they come in, we'll get, we'll get those added. The, but you can't, the problem is you base these budgets on definites and, and these can be adjusted as things come in because you can't guarantee those are coming in. So, you know, there's a good chance and we have a history, but you don't plan a strategy or a budget on wishes. It has to, it has to be.
Said finite numbers. Right. I understand that. That's what I've been asking for.
I think at the, at the end of this, the, the, the goal is having that solution in place to be able to continue negotiating with our state and federal partners and with a good faith relationship that, that we're doing it. We, we're still a bit away. We don't have, we don't come away today with, with that plan. It sounds like we just need to find out, one is clarity on our current budget and then.
And I don't know that they're going to hold us to 100% funded, to have our plan funded 100%. The Army Corps could come back or we could have a big storm tomorrow and like, our whole plan is down and out. So I, I think we have to have some reasonable expectation that if we can't do 100% of it today, we could get there in 2027 or we can get there down the road. This is just a lot of.
That's the plan. That's a long-range plan. It's not.
I get it. I get it. But, but.
And what you're saying goes counter to what we're getting from our experts and the people that are out there getting and negotiating these loans.
No, every expert stood up here today and said it's fluid and said, you know, this could be all changed tomorrow or the Army Corps is going to look at this annually. They might change it from 11 to, to 2. Everything is fluid and I just don't know why we are so stuck in this one major number or numbers, actually. But that's where we are. That's what's going to make everybody feel better is to come up with this $20 million. Then we're going to have to do it.
All right. Board member comments. Commissioner Hanson?
I don't have any.
Any final comments?
I have one last thing to tell you. I just saw, I was posted. I want to send my regards to the family of, Dr. Jim Guines passed away recently. He was probably one of the first people I met here who was so, so wonderful for this community from school board and his position. He, he was smoking Jim. And every time I ate barbecue, I always wish it came out of his barbecue pit because he was, he was quite a gentleman. He stopped the clubs that we had on the beach that were getting concerned. He was involved so much in this community. And it's a tremendous loss to lose such a fine, fine gentleman. We have a lot of those people and we're losing them quickly. So I just did want to address it because I wanted to send our wishes and I'm sure everybody joins me in that.
Well, at our meeting tonight, I was going to bring some, at the official meeting tonight, but.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. That's two times. Well, he's twice as good as he could ever be. So we'll, we'll accept that absolutely. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. All right. I think I've had my share. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out and, and giving us your thoughts. Anything else? Ms. Patito?
No, I think we're good. We can certainly put together that working spreadsheet. I'm not sure how exactly it's going to work. I don't know if it's easier to maybe meet one-on-one and have us run the scenarios so that we're not deleting fields that have formulas and stuff in them. I don't know, but just a thought.
I'm okay with that if I can get around.
We may have to zoom with you, but.
All right. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.